All right, I hereby call this meeting of the Richmond Public School Board to order. Ms. Milson, can you make your announcement?
Well, this meeting is being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with the City of Richmond Ordinance Number 2020-093. The notice of the meeting stated that it was a virtual meeting. It would be streamed on the school school board's Facebook page. A link was provided. It also noted that the board would not receive public comment, but public comments could be submitted to the clerk and provided a link. The agenda to the meeting was posted to the RPSboard dot site and a link was provided to that. The notice also instructed people how to get translation services if they needed it for the meeting this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And ready for roll call.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Ms. Cosby?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Dr. Sapini? Ms. Door?
Here.
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Gibson?
Here.
Ms. Burke?
Here.
Ms. Owen?
Here.
And Madam Chair, nine of the eight board members present and participating at this moment.
I think eight of the nine, yes, good. Okay, now, we have public, nope, before public information, we have a recognition. Mr. Kamras?
You have to adopt your agenda.
Oh, sorry, let's adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
They're moved.
Becky? Ms. Door and Ms. Burke seconded it. Okay, then.
Roll call, give me one second. You said Ms. Door and Ms. Burke made the second?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Page? Mrs. Page, we're adopting the agenda.
You're muted, Ms. Page.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Cosby.
Ms. Cosby, there you go.
Yeah, thank you, but I see in this chat, Kenya, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda.
Okay. All right, then we will go to Ms. Gibson.
Ms. Owen, did you want to finish the vote that you started and then come back to Ms. Gibson for her amendment?
Well, can we do that, can we amend it after we approve it?
You can.
All right, then let's finish.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes, all right, Ms. Gibson?
Yes, I would like to amend the agenda so that our item specific to the curriculum comes prior to our budget action item.
Second?
I'll second it.
Their discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Let's have the vote of whether to amend the agenda and move the curriculum update before the board action item 5.01, so that would be 6.03 for the first read. First review, that would be 6.03 would be moved before 5.01, okay?
Okay. Give me one second, I am moving there. Ms. Page? Yes. Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
And Mrs. Owen?
No.
Motion passes 7-1.
Dr. Sapini has joined us, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. The next item is to approve the minutes. I did receive some corrections, those corrections have been made.
All right, is there a motion to approve the corrected minutes?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, that was Mr. Barlow and Ms. Door.
Thank you. Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
And Mrs. Page? I'm sorry, Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, and now is your recognition.
Okay, but I believe we don't have a recognition because we recognized their Teacher of the Year last time. So I think that was just a leftover item, so unless there's objection, we will move on to public information. And about public information, we have a great many of them, they will have been and will be posted. And so we are going to limit them to two minutes each. Ms. Wilson, you can start reading, and when you feel as though you need to stop, let me know, and we will have some other people volunteer to read them, thank you.
Thank you, I may be able to do this, I'm gonna get to the top and get my Okay, the first one is Dennis Palma. I know that everything you are doing for the children is good and we are thankful, we only trust God that everything goes well. The next one is Karan Washington. My name is Karan Washington, recent graduate from Aspire. Aspire is a good program. I wouldn't be where I am today if like, in life, if it wasn't for the wonderful staff there. It's a good program and I highly recommend that students should seek the help that they need to graduate. If they are behind, Ms. Henson is the best. She will never want to see any of her kids fail in life, keep this program, it keeps everyone out of trouble. Mr. Trotter, wonderful help, he shows that tough love a lot because he want to see everyone successful. The next one is Beth Van Beth Van Turnbull. Thank you for this opportunity for me to address the school board and share information about a new program to support students facing homelessness. With a community innovation grant from the Robbins Foundation, Housing Families First, and Richmond Public Schools Family Support Center have launched the Bringing Families Home program to help families precariously housed in hotels or overcrowded situations move into permanent homes. The program was slated to begin in July 2020, but the pandemic has brought urgent needs to our community. Funders for housing and opportunity is, I'm sorry, funders for housing and opportunity is providing a grant in response to COVID-19 so that this vitally important housing program can begin immediately. Staff from the RPS Family Support Center may refer students and their families struggling to sustain motel stays or those unstably housed in overcrowding conditions to Housing Families First. We can then provide one-time financial assistance to facilitate leasing an apartment as well as housing search help and housing counseling provided by our newly hired school housing navigator. Destiny Hunter, a graduate of John Marshall High School and a Housing Families First staff member, has been tapped to take on this new role. The housing navigator will work out of the RPS Family Support Center once the school system reopens, until then, housing assistance and lease signings are being done remotely. The Bringing Families Home program will enable over 400 RPS students and their families to move from motel rooms and friends' couches into a home of their own over the next three years. For more information about the program, please contact me at, and she gives an email, or RPS Homeless Education Specialist Erica Schmail, and she also gave her email. Again, thank you for this opportunity to partner with Richmond Public Schools and share information with you. Those emails are beth@housingfamiliesfirst.org or eschmail@rvaschools.net. Julia Maria Luna. Good evening Superintendent and School Board, my name is Julia Luna and I have three children, two of whom attend Miles Jones School. I begin by thanking you for the efforts you make so that our children continue to receive food during this time of the pandemic. I also appreciate the effort for students to continue their learning. In the case of my children continuing learning, I have had a bit of trouble preparing the task. Some of the videos that are online do not load well, and I have also had very little information from my son's school, Miles Jones, about how they will continue to work with the students. In the first two weeks, we were given written assignments for my son to do, but then I didn't receive anything else. I have worked with my son with what they have on the RPS page, but that is in general and not specific to the school. I want to know if with the computer distribution, you, the school, or the teacher are going to assign a class for the students. It would be good if our children's teachers communicate directly with the parents, especially us Hispanics, in order to better understand the new study system so that we can help our children, so that when the schools reopen, they are not behind. My son needs one-on-one help and it is very difficult for me to help him without a specific homework program. Also, I have a girl who will enter kindergarten next year and I have no information to help her since before the schools closed, I did not have a permanent teacher, and because of that, I have no one to ask for homework to work with learning from her. It would be very important, and you are very grateful that the teachers call us and help us with this new process. Thank you for your intention and very attention and very grateful for the help you provide us. Mia Washington. I'm in support of the new curriculum, I believe that it will improve students' understanding by being exposed to culturally relieved curriculum. Teresa Anderson. Dear RPS School Board members, I am the Principal of James H. Blackwell Elementary School. I would like the board to approve the new math and ELA curricula recommended for 2020-2021. I know that the school board is committed to meet the needs of all stakeholders and ensuring our students receive an education that will allow them to be contributing members of society. The new curriculum will provide our students with culturally relevant resources as well as rigorous activities and real-life experiences. I realize we are in unprecedented times, however, our students cannot wait any longer to be exposed to lessons that are diverse and rigorous. Some of our teachers are hesitant and believe the time is off because of COVID-19. However, schooling as we knew it is changing every day and we have to prepare even when we do not know all the answers. Approving these curricula will provide students with an opportunity to compete against anyone within the United States. Secondly, it will provide the professional support of our teachers need from a group of well-trained professionals with prior classroom experience. Lastly, every teacher module provides the teacher with an overview of units with standards, differentiation strategies, ESL supports, as well as culturally relevant texts. Our students need each of you to see beyond the moment and provide them an equitable education. I appreciate the time and effort the school board has taken in evaluating this matter, and I hope you will approve this curriculum for our children. If you would like to discuss this request further, please contact me at your earliest convenience, thank you for your time and consideration. Mary Beth Ryan. I teach for Richmond Public Schools, this fall will be my 20th year teaching and I am in favor of adopting a new curriculum. Our old curriculum benchmark is not close enough to close the gap in reading. Our students and teachers deserve better, I am asking that we be trained over June and July so we are ready to implement the new curriculum in the fall, please agree to purchasing a new curriculum for RPS. Sanomi Morrison. Greetings. I am a math interventionist with Richmond City Public Schools, I am writing today in support of continuing the implementation of the Richmond Math for the District. My current school, James H. Blackwell Elementary, used Eureka Math for the 2018-2019 school year and Richmond Math for the 2019-2020 school year. The curriculum writers did a great job aligning the Virginia standards of learning to create the Richmond Math curriculum. There is a need across the district for quality Tier One instruction, and it is my belief that Richmond Math provides opportunities for students and teachers to engage in highly effective mathematics instruction. When teachers are using Tier One curriculum as intended, students are consistently doing mathematics to the level demanded by the Tier One curriculum. They are spending they are spending, I'm sorry, trying to get my timer straight. They're spending the majority of their instructional time actively doing mathematics, not just watching the teacher or copying off the board. Additionally, students are given multiple opportunities to discuss their mathematical thinking and building on each other's reasonings. Pacing is on schedule so that students can engage with the full curriculum during the school year and instructional resources are easily accessible online for free. What I personally enjoy most about this curriculum is the instructional ladder. The ladder represents the sequence of skills or learning to successfully complete a lesson. Each new level of complexity is a rung on the ladder. The mission of Great Minds, the developer of Okay, Amanda, I'm sorry, time was up on that. Amanda Reiser. Good evening, over the weekend, there was a lot of discussion about curriculum online. That discussion got sidetracked by what curriculum we should choose. We lost sight of the real problem, whether a new curriculum is what is best for teachers and students in the midst of a pandemic. In short, I strongly believe the answer to that is no, let me explain why. We have so many more important things to think about right now. We need to be thinking about all the logistics of the next school year, like getting online teaching up and running consistently, cleaning supplies, smaller class sizes, replacing desks for all teachers who have tables, a safe bussing process, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Besides all of that, which is a huge undertaking, we need to focus our P D time on how to help our kids socially and emotionally learn in this new world of social distancing. Schooling, whether that school is online or in person. I assume that you have been doing as much research as I have about what schools can and should look like this fall. If you have, you will see that it looks absolutely nothing like what we are used to. The problem teachers have with getting a new curriculum has nothing to do with our fear of change. Change is inevitable when you teach. We are constantly adjusting to changes around us because change happens daily, even minute by minute in our classrooms. Teachers right now want and need to learn best practices for distance learning. Teachers want and need to learn how to better help their kids with all of their emotions. The other night after a Zoom class with my students, I got a text from my mom saying her daughter was sobbing. I called her and could barely get her to speak because she was crying so hard. All she said she wanted and needed was to give me a hug and go back to school. I felt helpless and like a failure that night, and honestly countless other nights during all of this because as hard as I tried, I couldn't make her pain go away. I couldn't give her a hug and I couldn't open the school back up, no matter how much she needed both. P D should be about how we can navigate those types of instances, and my time is up. Barbara Haas. Good evening, I am the librarian at TC Bouchard Middle School. I am also a resident of the 3rd District and sent my two children through Richmond Public Schools. I would like to speak in support of the adoption of a district-wide curriculum for our students. I was honored to serve on the District's Literacy Plan Committee. I saw firsthand the efforts that went toward reviewing different curriculum options. I also see every day what a strong curriculum can do for teaching and learning in my building. Here are some bullet points about why this is so important. Equity, whether you are a veteran teacher or it's your first year, we want to make sure that our students are getting the same high-quality, rigorous curriculum. Many of our students are very transient. It's imperative that no matter what zip code they live in, they have the same access to learning. Engagement, as the librarian, I'm thinking about relevant, thought-provoking literature, but really, don't we want our students to be engaged in all of their classes? Having a vetted, uniform curriculum goes a long way to making sure that our students are actively engaged in what they are learning. Purchasing power, being responsible for the purchase of all library materials. I understand the power of bulk purchasing. Committing to a high-quality, rigorous curriculum allows RPS to pool resources to get the best price for teaching materials. Assessment, common assessments, enough said. In my humble opinion, we need to stop looking at educational resources as expenses and start looking at them as investments. I work in a school that has a high turnover rate and often we get many first-year teachers. We owe it to them to give them all the tools that they need to be successful. Please support our students and invest in their education by funding this critical resource. Thank you for your time and don't touch your phone. Ms. Brown. Hello, I'm pretty sure you have heard these questions and concerns over and over again. But I am a parent of four, two elementary students, one middle schooler, and an infant. And my concern and fear of this COVID-19 pandemic is overwhelming. I want to see if there are any options for parents who do not want to send their kids back to school, whether they open or not for fear of not being 100% sure that the children are safe, with no way of knowing if anyone in the schools will bring the virus in. Being that someone could spread the virus with no symptoms at all, I will not be confident enough to place my children in an environment with so many dangers at any point this year or the next. With cases still rising and not going away, there is no way to know for sure when this virus is gone for good. The numbers are seeing, the numbers we are seeing are just from people who are actually getting tested. Who knows how many there are who are not, who are just going day by day carrying the virus and not getting tested. Will there be other options for those students' parents who do not feel comfortable enough to send their children back? Thank you in advance. Kathy Assani. As an EL educator, I would like to voice my concern on behalf of the EL students in RPS schools in hopes that the school board will see the great need to fund more support for our students. The teacher ratio of 1 to 57 that we are not even able to meet as it stands now is a ratio that we are not able to make, to meet, attain at some schools. As we strive to provide adequate education and support for our EL students and to meet the state's recommended time to teach per student, that I think is to become a mandate and not a recommendation, is not going to be able to be achieved if we do not have enough resources in terms of support teachers training to support our ELL population. Thank you all so much for your support and consideration in funding the needs of our ELL students. Ainsley Perkins. Good evening, School Board members. We heard a resounding theme from many RPS teachers on public comment at the 5/14/20 special meeting. We heard their thoughtful and significant concerns about implementing a new curriculum during a pandemic. There is no guidebook for this public health crisis and our top priority should be ensuring that we meet the basic needs of students, their families, and our teachers and staff which have been exposed by this pandemic. The administration will not be in the classrooms trying to implement this curriculum while being significantly challenged while being significantly challenged to develop those nurturing and critical connections to students in a virtual environment. The administration will not be responsible for ensuring social distancing and trying to explain to four- and five-year-old students why they cannot hug their teacher. RPS teachers are the boots on the ground, they deserve for us to seek out and value their subject matter expertise. They have degrees and some have multiple degrees, they have professional certifications, years of working in a high-poverty, high-needs school system, and you know what? They continue to choose to teach in RPS despite decrepit facilities, lack of resources and supports, minimal bilingual staff among other issues. Let's press pause this year. Host virtual Q and As throughout the year for teachers to gather information. Ask questions and share their students' experiences. Then we take a big step forward in working collaboratively with our teachers in a manner they deserve and that benefits us all best. Cassandra Kilbo. Hello, my name is Cassie Kilbo and I'm a first-grade teacher at Broad Rock. I am so thankful to be an RPS teacher, I also serve as one of the site coordinators at Broad Rock for food distribution. First, I wanted to highlight the few distribution processes, it is efficient, essential, and wonderful for so many of our young families. I believe it is the most important thing RPS is doing right now. I am so thankful for the distribution centers and that we get to connect families to food, resources, and basic hygiene items. Thank you, RPS. Second, in revision to the proposed budget cuts, I believe that we should reconsider cutting the 10 new special education roles. Now more than ever, we need to close gaps of inequity and make sure that all students are able to learn and thrive. Reducing their class sizes will provide needed extra support and an ideal environment for students and teachers. I believe that these positions should be essential, thank you so much for all you do. Shell Miller. I am so excited about the adoption of the Eureka Great Minds Math curriculum. I work at an elementary school that piloted the program for the 2018-19 school year and fully implemented it for the 2019-20 school year. While it is admittedly a big adjustment for teachers, coaches, support staff, and administration, I have seen firsthand how the students flourish. The curriculum is conceptual and teaches students to think critically when solving problems. It enables students to make connections between the math they learn in school and the math they will need to utilize outside of the classroom. Our students deserve the opportunity to take ownership of their mathematics education. They deserve to learn the skills needed to apply the content they learn in the classroom to real-world situations. Eureka Great Minds provides a curriculum that promotes a deep understanding of mathematics that sets our students up for lasting success. There is a strong professional development component which supports teachers as they adjust to a more conceptual method of teaching. While not scripted, the curriculum provides a daily guide, binet, that teachers can tailor to the needs of their students as well as their own teaching style. By reviewing and studying the lesson plans, as opposed to painstakingly creating them from scratch, teachers can make notes and adjustments to make each lesson fit their classroom without compromising the content. With the adoption of this curriculum, teachers and students will be provided with the same rich experience across the district, thus promoting and facilitating an equitable and successful mathematics education. The adoption includes the ability for curriculum writers and coaches to provide guidance on how to fully align the Eureka curriculum to address gaps in its alignment to the Virginia standards of learning, thereby creating a Eureka for Virginia version. With the RPS community as our number one priority, there is no time like the present to make a change to improve the quality of their educational experience. Tarnisha James. I am a school counselor at Leonwood-Holton Elementary School. I would like to express my gratitude and support for the office and engagement and the home visiting program. I would just like to say that it has always been my passion to build positive character in students and to teach them that they are not limited to being products of their environment. I am writing in support of the home visiting program because I know that the key to having a successful educational experience cannot exist without connecting any student, without connecting our students and building meaningful relationships. This will be especially important once our students return to school facing new dilemmas and needing additional support post-COVID-19. I hope that this matter is taken into consideration when discussing the budget because I truly believe that this program is beneficial to our students and their families, thank you. Barbara Syke. Dear Richmond Public School Board members, NextUp, RBA is a local nonprofit that manages a system of expanded learning programs directly for RPS middle schoolers. Our network is comprised of over 50 community-based organizations that provide quality enrichment in the areas of STEM, sports and health, arts and humanities and leadership and work skills. This school year alone, we have engaged 730 RPS middle school students in learning beyond the school day. I say with 100% confidence that our network of providers and instructors take their commitment to serving RPS students very seriously. We are excited about the possibility of RPS adopting a new curriculum because it will bring forth the opportunity to better align the learning taking place after school with what students are learning during school. NextUp commits to working with RPS to create professional development opportunities for enrichment instructors to inform their lessons for meaningful content so that students are able to connect what they are experiencing in the out-of-school time space with what they are learning in the classroom. Shannon Gwynn. Hello, my name is Shannon Gwynn and I'm a teacher at Miles Jones. I'm writing in regards to two items, the first is about adopting a new curriculum. I have reviewed the EL education for reading curriculum and I like the flexible pacing and the model. It fits very well with what we have been doing with improvements for our students. I have many questions, concerns, like will all teachers admin be trained on how to fully implement the model? Will all schools be expected to follow with fidelity? But before we get to that point, my concern is the long-lasting effects of the pandemic. I feel at this time, it would be adding more anxiety and stress to the return back to school. Teachers, students, and families have been dealing with many changes to their daily lives. Upon returning to school, our main focus should be on the safety, health, and emotional support for each other in order to move forward smoothly with academics. Adopting a new curriculum may misdirect our focus and make an already shaky situation more unstable. And I had to mention, a new curriculum comes with a price tag that we may be able to put off until future years, and we could just make appropriate adjustments to what we have already been using. Although I support the idea of a new uniform curriculum, I am not in support of the timing. The second item I would like to speak on is building relationships with our students and families. Throughout the year, myself and many teachers have been developing these relationships, not only within the classroom but in the homes of our students. This is being continued differently through Zoom, class dojo, phone conversations, and social distancing sidewalk visits. These relationships will continue to be the foundation that helps hold our families together as we transition back to a more traditional academic setting. Thank you for your continued support for the teachers, our students, and our families with the home visit program. Betty Stevens. Dear RPS School Board members, I'm a kindergarten teacher at J. H. Blackwell Elementary School. I am in agreement with the board to approve the ELA curricula and the new math that has been recommended for 2020-2021 school year. The school board, along with the community leaders, have our students' best interest in mind, ensuring that each student receives the best education possible. The ELA and The ELA and new math will allow all students the opportunity to experience the rich, compelling, and challenging curriculum they deserve. The design of the curriculum will provide support for their learning needs. Also, the curricula, curricula are essential to the development and growth that helps establish equity. And unlock the potential that will provide our students for real life experiences. Approving this curriculum will focus on equity, give them the opportunity to achieve high academic standards. And help them take their full place in society for which they are prepared when they leave school. Equity is the foundation on which this curriculum rests. Our students will be able to demonstrate proficiency and deeper understanding, applying their learning, think critically, and communicate clearly. This will illustrate mastery of knowledge and skills. In addition, in addition, students will work to become effective learners, become ethical people, and contribute to a better world. This will develop their character. Therefore, students will create complex work, demonstrate craftsmanship, and create authentic work. This will demonstrate high quality work. I appreciate the time the board is considering this curriculum. And after the evaluation is completed, the approval will be unanimous for the betterment of our students. Thank you for your consideration. Emil Phillips, to the members of the Richmond School Board, we are impressed with the proposed new reading and math curriculum and recommend its adoption at tonight's meeting. Our first, our rising first grader attends Westover Hills Elementary. And the Eureka Math has been an impressive program both during the year and the at-home work that has been provided over the past two months. Due to excellent curriculum implementation by our teachers and exceptional online lesson facilitation from Great Minds. Our daughter has moved seamlessly between the classroom and at-home learning. She has demonstrated an understanding of the presented math concepts and the ability to globalize that information into real life situations. While RPS has made great efforts to provide teaching and guidance through RPS at home. It is clear that the expertise of the staff of the Great Minds has produced a superior product for online education. Given the uncertainty of how the next school year will take place, it is imperative that we have access to high quality education in both venues. The curriculum created by Great Minds achieves in both arenas. Our teachers will benefit from the strategies and framework offered by fully implementing the Eureka math curriculum. And our entire district will benefit from excellent teaching in both the home and classroom environments. We hope that you will demonstrate your commitment to high quality education by voting to approve the adoption of new curriculum for both reading and math. Thank you. Kelly Jerome. I am the parent of a rising fourth grader and kindergarten at Westover Hills Elementary School. After reviewing the proposed math and ELA curriculum with Allison L. Cooby and Autumn Neighbors, I support moving forward with adopting this new curriculum now. One benefit to adopting it now is that it can be applied for our current and foreseeable online training and instruction. This could potentially work better than trying to convert the old lessons to a new format. Westover Hills Elementary was a pilot school for Eureka Math and that had a shaky start for the parents who didn't understand it. But the school reached out and took the time to work with parents and after that I was behind it. There will always be a learning curve. We have the tools to make this work. I am also looking forward to the updated reading materials. Thank you. Norm Gold, I am the president of the market at twenty fifth and was invited by Great Heart to provide a comment for the RPS school board this evening. Before opening the market at twenty fifth, I had twenty years of food bank leadership. I've responded to many disasters. And can attest that the impact from the COVID nineteen has raised needs to an unsurpassed level. Far greater than the two thousand nine recession or even hurricanes. The need is tremendous. The Marcus, the market at twenty fifth has been honored to help support organizations like the Richmond Public Schools. In feeding hundreds of homeless individuals affected by COVID nineteen. Public and private organizations and dedicated volunteers like those distributing the RPS sponsored bags of food are helping people survive. The Richmond Public School volunteers coordinated by Erica Schneil have been wonderful to work with and we will be happy to support this effort as long as needed. As the community market with the mission in the east end, we are also proud to support the Henrico County Public Schools in feeding one thousand people per week. And senior connections in feeding four hundred and fifty seniors per week. Every day, our dedicated team members, nearly all of whom live in the east end, ask the question, what more can we do? The deep caring for our neighbors drives our mission every day. The safety and health of our team members and customers has been our priority since there was a hint of COVID. Two months ago, we initiated vigilant cleaning and sanitizing standards. Provided masks to all staff, required them to be worn, requested our customers to wear face coverings when they shop, and required social distancing. Many other safety guards were installed to provide a safe and healthy environment for team and customers. As a result, we've been fortunate that none of our team members have become COVID positive. I am concerned though that with the discussion of lifting some of the restrictions, people will become too relaxed in their vigilance. Not following the social distancing and not wearing a face covering. The rate of COVID in the east end is the highest in the Richmond area and there's a strong community-wide effort. To ensure everyone has face masks. Over the past three days at our store, we've seen a significant reduction in the amount of customers who are wearing face coverings. We need to consistently communicate that the virus has not gone away. And my time is up. Um, Kelly Cannon, hello. I am the parent of a kindergarten student at Westover Hills Elementary. I would like to voice my strong support for adoption of the proposed curriculum. Westover Hills is currently using Eureka Math. Perhaps it's still relying on quarantine is that I've become very familiar with the teaching method. I've been so impressed with the way that Eureka teaches a number of concepts, helping students to visualize math. Rather than reinforce rote memorization. I've talked to parents of kindergartners at schools that are not using Eureka. And there's a notable difference in the sophistication and conceptual understanding conveyed by our lessons. Furthermore, I am very excited by the ELA curriculum and its use of real literature rather than stock curriculum tests. This will give our kids a great foundation for lifelong learning. Lastly, I understand there is some hesitation about making a curriculum shift now. I would suggest that we are in a period of great change and have already risen to the occasion. With the possibility of virtual school in the fall, it is more important than ever to offer curriculum that encourages independent or in curiosity. I have full faith that now is the best time to adopt this new curriculum. And I urge you to support adoption as soon as possible. Thank you. Thomas Hartman, to curriculum or not to curriculum? That is the question. I say curriculum. When the going gets tough, the tough get going. Is this a time to be careful with cautious and careful and bold? Is the word bold compatible only with the word certain? Is this a time to wait and see or time to move forward and then see? Accomplishments of significance rarely come in times of certainty. The attitude of wait and see so often results in wait and stay. Stay more about, do we have any interest in being more about? Accomplishments of. Okay, I understand the pull of wait and see, but I give you words from the preamble to our strategic plan. Without a world-class education, true freedom and liberty will remain out of reach for far too many of our children. We cannot allow that to happen. Our very destiny as a city rests upon us, ensuring that our schools become engines of opportunity. Do, do engine fun, do engines function best set on idle? And to vary to a familiar metaphor, ships are indeed safe as kept in harbor, but that is not what ships are for. Please, RPS, let us now give meaning to the choice of bold. Jody Lau, dear RPS school board members, I've had the opportunity in recent days to discuss the upcoming curriculum with Principal L. Kobe. And I ask you to please support this adoption as quickly as possible. A strong, high-quality curriculum is foundational to student success and Richmond is in need of an updated curriculum now. I have personally seen how effective the Eureka Math, Richmond Math curriculum is both in our daughter's performance. And in the school's dramatic overall test score increase. I would be thrilled to see similar results from a high-quality ELA curriculum. Principal L. Kobe described the specific examples of literature used in the proposed curriculum and how she has seen it used in classrooms. At Westover Hills Elementary School and I'm very excited to see that proliferated to all classes throughout RPS. I trust our academic leaders who you hired to roll this out appropriately and I believe that our kids, kids cannot wait for this. I know that our teachers as professionals with appropriate support from RPS can implement this on the schedule laid out by administration. There will never be a time when all can agree it's the perfect time to implement a new curriculum. But we are, but we, RPS, need a strong foundation during these uncertain times. I see so much value in teachers becoming online learners with PD for new curriculum. So they are better equipped to become online teachers for our students if it comes to that this fall or in the future. I would love to see this curriculum adopted tonight. Please in support of, please in support that. If it does not get passed tonight, please support its adoption at the earliest opportunity. Luis Luna, watching these budget meetings have been very frustrating over the last few weeks. It is apparent that many of you all keep preaching about how dire of a situation we are in with the pandemic. Yet your actions do not match your words. We are currently facing an economic and health crisis. We need to meet survival needs first. Teachers need to raise that you all keep ducking and dodging as if it was the virus itself. But instead you all want to buy new curriculums that will be improbable to implement this year and pay private companies for professional development. As a teacher, I understand the significance of rigor and equity, but where was this urgency from the board last year or the year before? I am not against the new curriculum. I am just against a new curriculum this year under the circumstances. Prices call for adapting and it is apparent that you're not adapting. We do not know how schools will open next year, so to continue to act as if things are normal is just irresponsible. Actions speak louder than words. I invite you all to spend at least a month in Richmond Public Schools. Many of you all have been on the board for years and it's appalling that many of you do not know anything about the different programs. In RPS like Aspire Academy, Spartan Academy, VPI, and more. Do your jobs. How can you make decisions on such important matters and decide where taxpayer money will go without actually doing research on these programs? It is downright embarrassing. Being bored with your lives, wanting to be career politicians. Or just wanting some local fame and clout are not good reasons to be on the board. It is apparent that some of y'all really need to look in the mirror and ask yourselves why you are on the school board. Shayla Holden, good evening. I am the principal of Overby Shepherd Elementary School. While I know that we are embarking upon uncertain times and that can be scary, confusing, and stressful for all stakeholders. Our students still deserve to have the best education possible to prepare them for the next level. In these times, we must have an even greater urgency for the success of our students. They have lost months of instruction. If we do nothing and don't provide them with a solid foundation, we have failed them. So I propose that we adopt a new curriculum that provides our students a solid foundation in both math and literacy. Don't get me wrong, our social and emotional well-being is important. It's actually significant. We all need, we will all need this in the coming months and throughout the upcoming, upcoming school year. However, why must it be either or? We must continue to address our students' academic needs as diligently as we address their social and emotional needs. If we don't, what is the alternative for our students? If we know we need a stronger curriculum, why is this even a question? Don't our students deserve the best we have to give them? Respectfully submitted. Terry Anderson, dear Richmond Public School Board members. Currently, I am the academic interventionist at James H. Blackwell Elementary School. However, I am a veteran RPS elementary educator for twenty-four years. National Board Certified Mentor Teacher Instructional Facilitator and Curriculum Writer Reviewer for RPS. I fully support the adoption of the new ELA curriculum recommended for twenty 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 twenty-one. As a district, we recognize that our students come to us with diverse experiences, interests, strengths, and needs. Therefore, all students must have access to challenging and personally meaningful curriculum and instruction. Cassie Powell, I believe this particular curriculum uniquely nurtures the development of students' critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills. While providing structures for social and emotional development. Ultimately, our goal is to support, support our students becoming lifelong learners that understand diversity, empathy, and compassion. Which will help them be informed and well-rounded citizens in a rapidly changing society. When making your decision, please consider these qualities and ensuring our students are exposed to culturally relevant content that is equitable and timely. I hope that you will approve the adoption of the new ELA curriculum. Thank you for your time, service, and consideration. And I don't have a name on this next one. Good evening Chairwoman Owen, Vice Chairwoman Burke, Superintendent Camerson, Board Members. My name is Cassie Powell and I'm providing this public comment on behalf of the Legal Aid Justice Center where I am an attorney. First, we want to acknowledge the incredibly difficult time we are in and the tremendous efforts of RPS staff, teachers, administrators. And the board in meeting the needs of families during this crisis. As you know. Legal Aid Justice Center sent a letter to RPS in the initial stages of the crisis to demand changes to the RPS food distribution program. We are appreciative that since our initial app. Since our initial letter, RPS has expanded its food distribution program to include additional sites. We encourage RPS to seek ways to solicit ongoing feedback from affected families during this time to maximize accessibility for food distribution. This evening, however, we encourage the administration and the board to take actions to protect students of color and students with disabilities. Who face or have experienced school pushout, including suspension, expulsion, and alternative placement. Last year's suspension and expulsions for RPS students, particularly students of color, remained high. According to data released from the Virginia Department of Education during the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. Black students made up sixty-six point one percent of the total student population. But ninety point seven, seven percent of all students receiving short-term suspensions. Ninety-two point nine percent of students receiving long-term suspensions and one hundred percent of students expelled. Thirty-eight percent of students at Armstrong High School in Richmond received at least one short-term suspension in two thousand eighteen nineteen. Forty-nine students from George Wood High School in Richmond received a long-term suspension more than ten days in two thousand eighteen nineteen. Thirty-four percent of students at MLK Middle School in Richmond received at least one short-term suspension in two thousand eighteen nineteen. And fourteen percent, and my time is up. Um, okay, Becca Richardson. My name is Becca Richardson. My wife and I are residents and parents of two, which, two RPS students in the third district. I'd like to express my strong support for the K-12 curriculum initiative included in the proposed budget. I'm so proud of the RPS administration for proposing to provide our teachers and students with this kind of tool. Our incredible teachers put so much work into interpreting, improving, and creating content from an inherited framework. That is ambiguous, outdated, and born out of inequality. RPS has the opportunity to step out of the old framework and proactively choose a tool that better serves our students and teachers. We owe our teachers a better than the current framework. Our teachers deserve a curriculum that provides clarity on content. Teachers should not be forced to recreate the wheel. With a thoughtfully curated curriculum as a guide. Our teachers can use their time to plan lessons that will resonate with their kids rather than searching for content and tools. RPS is full of incredible principals, administrators, and staff. We have an all-star team who is capable of creating a system that offers consistency across all RPS schools. Consistency at school will offer some mitigation to trauma that our students may experience outside of school. From a community building perspective, a consistent K-12 curriculum will offer so many opportunities for schools to partner together. And for parents of any RPS school to collaborate and share experiences from the lens of supporting our students at home. Most importantly, a consistent curriculum offers RPS the chance to reduce significant inequities in our system. The lifelong benefit that RPS students will experience from such a system far outweighs the cost and effort of implementing it. Our administration has provided me with a sense of trust and these days amazement at the level of engagement they have in our communities. I believe that the curriculum proposed by our administration will be implemented with a tremendous amount of thought and care. Matthew Gaston. I would humbly like to submit my thoughts on the adoption of a new curriculum for the coming school year. While the proposed curriculum has the possibility of helping raise the standards of learning in many ways throughout the district. It is my thinking that this is not the time to make dramatic financial changes. In the current state of the world, we do not know what education will even look like when we finally get on the other side of this global pandemic. We cannot predict when that will be, when it will be safe to return to the classroom. And how the layout of the school will look when we do get to walk back in our buildings. It seems to me that adopting a new curriculum when we are not sure when we can use it. How we will be able to implement it and if it will even translate to a post-COVID nineteen environment. In the proposal, educator resilience is referenced as well as flexibility. It is my opinion that instead of spending money on one program we hope will work. That we are more targeted in our approach to raise the standards throughout RPS. I am happy to assist in any way I can. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address this issue and taking the time to read through it. We are all RPS. Joyce Ote, to the distinguished members of the Richmond Public School Board. I am honored to be a Richmond Public Schools elementary teacher for over twenty years. I recently accepted a new position, my dream job as a gifted and talented teacher for grades two through five. I would like to elaborate on two budget items dear to my heart. The first item is a four percent pay raise for teachers and staff. As a mentor and lead teacher, I've had the opportunity to talk with many teachers professionally and personally. Many of my colleagues must work a part-time job to help pay the bills. Some of their part-time jobs are now closed or shut down due to the coronavirus pandemic. Also, many other staff members have a roommate or spouse affected by the declining economy or illness due to the pandemic. So the four percent raise would be greatly appreciated. The second item is action four point two, the home visiting program. The home visiting program budget should not be decreased or eliminated, especially during this frightening pandemic. Our parents and families need our guidance and support now more than ever, although we can no longer visit homes due to social distancing. There are many other alternatives to continue building a strong connection between home and school. For example, essential items such as face masks, cleaning products, or gift cards can be mailed to homes or dropped off during meal distributions to help to keep our families healthy and safe. I have conducted over four memorable home visits with my colleague and friend, Ms. Irma Diaz, before the pandemic hit. So as you discuss the upcoming budget, please consider the 4% raise for teachers and staff and continue to allocate funds for the home visiting program. Thank you and say stay, stay safe. Deanna Fierro. On behalf of the League of United Latin American Citizens, Richmond Region Council Number 4614, LULAC RBA urges the school board to postpone their adoption of a new curriculum for the 2020-2021 school year. While we understand that having resources to support the academic growth of our students is necessary, we don't agree that right now is the best time for the adoption of it. Richmond Public Schools has corrected enough of its own systemic issues directly connected to serving our English language learners. The LULAC Board thanks RPS for its genuine efforts to provide families, computers, and internet access, but knows that this task is far from being completed. Our ELL families are still dealing with issues with connecting to the internet, picking up computers and hotspots, and with accessing and understanding learning materials online. We can online, we can online imagine the difficulty our families have with the rollout of a new curriculum that is not directly aligned to the Virginia standards of learning. We also stand with the divisions educators who are not, who are already stressed with the switch to online teaching and ask that you not add such a difficult task of implementing a new curriculum online. We thank the board for keeping the 10 new ELL hires in the FY21 budget, and we ask that they continue to work in this direction. We ask that the board postpone new curriculum adoption until access online, learning materials, and time to review them is guaranteed to both families and educators. We ask the board request of the administration a division-wide disparities report to be shared publicly so that the administration and the board can research solutions to improve student academic performance for all students. Linda Jaeger. I'm writing on behalf of the curriculum adoption of Richmond Eureka Math. I have been in the unique position of being a writer of third-grade Richmond Math and now being the teacher of the third-grade Richmond At-Home Lessons. In addition, this was my first year of teaching the Eureka Lessons. In the previous year, I used some of the lessons in the classroom, but not on a regular basis. What I have learned this year is that Eureka is good. No, great math. They forego the cutesy fluff for strong mathematics. All of the math process goals for students listed in each video we curriculum framework for each grade level, problem-solving, communication, reasoning, connections, and mathematical representations are clearly and strongly taught. I have learned a lot this year, and I have been a math coach with RPS for over 12 years and teaching with RPS for 28-plus years. And I have found that these lessons do require reading and planning, and teachers cannot just come in without any preparation and expect to teach. There was even one lesson for the at-home lessons that I was struggling with, U7-L13, Week 4, Day 2. It was presenting the concept differently than I had ever taught it. However, I was able to use the Eureka Online teacher videos to figure out what was supposed to be happening in the lesson and was able to then execute it. The students' flip-grid responses showed me that they had no difficulty understanding what I was teaching. Adopting this curriculum would enable our teachers to have access to the vast wealth of PDs and teaching videos that they had to offer. Because of many different circumstances, I was able to only hold one parent meeting this year. In that meeting, I walked the parents through using the place value disks to solve addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division problems. We also used the recinerix, and they actually got to make some to use at home. Although many of the parents told me at the beginning of the meeting that they were very apprehensive of the Richmond Math program, at the end of the meeting, all of the parents were leaving with comments like, "I wish they had taught us this when I was in school, and I can't believe how much easier this makes learning." And my time is up. Tawana Giles. Good evening Superintendent Camus and School Board Members. I am the principal of George Washington Carver Elementary School, where we are the home of the peanuts. I want to express my support for the new EL reading curriculum for the 2019-2020 year. The new curriculum provides the needed academic rigor our students need to be college and career-ready. This curriculum has a proven track record of student success. I am most excited about the opportunity for students to use critical thinking skills and some of their bestselling books that can be downloaded. This new reading curriculum also provides opportunities for teachers to experience rich professional development opportunities that help build their capacity as educators. Please give the RPS students the new curriculum they need to continue to compete on a global level. Thank you. Lisa Williams. More than which curriculum is used is anxiety around whether instruction will be delivered face-to-face, virtually, or in habit model. I am in support of the implementation of a new curriculum when we do return to school. Returning to a new normal needs to include a high-quality curriculum that addresses the diverse needs of all our learners. Now more than ever, it's important to have a curriculum with social, emotional learning embedded. Maintaining high expectations through a strong focus on instruction is important in trauma-informed practices. What would be imperative is to ensure there is a strong implementation plan in place, including materials being distributed in a timely manner and sufficient professional development at the onset and sustained through the year. Keisha King. Good evening. I am a teacher in the city of Richmond. I wanted to take the time to talk about a few things. There is a time and a place for everything, and at one point, the original budget line items were in the perfect place at its perfect time. But now times have changed, and just like educators are always told to be flexible when things abruptly change in our teaching, we need you to be flexible since things have abruptly changed that impacts the future. Please think wisely about the following. ELELA. I do not see where it is aligned with state standards. Now you are probably wondering, why does that matter if it is such a great program? I agree. It has character skills and social, emotional learning. Training is one of the biggest issues that we have, and I'm glad that there is a plan for that, but there are other issues that will need to be addressed. Pacing it is unacceptable for us to have to wait around for the new pacing per quarter, then be told, "Watch RPS tech for updates and modifications daily, weekly, monthly." Assessments from the district, the assessments on power school from the district do not align with what we taught. We need an updated assessment program that has aligned with the SOLs and the programs we are teaching. Lesson plans versus internalization form whatever we use should be available to use at this time and rule out at a part of the training. This made teaching challenging for us last year with the new curriculum last year. I hope whatever you all decide, this is a part of the conversations. I understand this is a lot to figure out. Please keep in mind the teachers are the frontline workers. We will have to think about a lot when we return. One that I think about is classroom cleanliness. I am that teacher who wants my students to feel like they are at home, and I am also that teacher who has complained about the cleanliness of my classroom. I should not have to work in an unsafe, hellish environment. Maybe we can look into the matter to the number of students, to custodian ratio for all schools. Custodians need better cleaning supplies and training on the quickest educational ways of cleaning. They may need more manpower. Thanks for taking the time to hear and feel my concerns. Good luck with this huge job. Stacy Brown.
Ms. Wilson, I think your audio is a little bit off. It's a little bit hard to hear now.
Okay, is that better?
It's still listening. It changed about 20 seconds ago.
Okay. I don't know what else to do.
I think that's good.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Stacy Brown. Members of the board, I am deeply frustrated that the administration is determined to move forward with the purchase of a new curriculum. It's gone again?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
You might, you might want to drop out and come, come back in.
Okay, so I think I know where we are.
I'm on Stacy's floor now. Did I come back in any better?
That's good.
Okay. I am deeply frustrated that the administration is determined to move forward with the purchase of a new curriculum despite what is obviously overwhelming public comment from teachers at the last two meetings, that this is not the time. Watching Mr. Camus and Dr. App blatantly ignore the outright cries from their teachers to not further overwhelm staff, students, and families during what will most assuredly be an online start of this upcoming school year in the continued name of equity has been disgusting. If we are all honest here, the minute that it was announced that Great Month was moving from DC to the Sawyer Center in December, we knew it was a matter of time before a big contract was procured from the district. Despite the fact that the overwhelming sentiment regarding Eureka Math seems to be that it is confusing, frustrating to teach, difficult for families, and doesn't align with our state standards. The money should be used toward wiser purchases at this time. We still haven't seen any actual or even hypothetical plans regarding what school might look like to keep our students, staff, and their families safe when school starts in the fall. Any changes will take thorough planning and inevitable funds. I implore you to vote no to the new curriculum and begin making realistic thought-out plans to keep our students and staff safe in the fall. Thank you. Vicki Bray. RPS leaders, teachers, staff, teachers, students have shown how strong they are as its team during these last two months and have done an amazing job of rolling out a whole new way of learning. A new curriculum for the 2020 school year will address the need for equality so that all RPS students, no matter what school they attend, have the same learning opportunities. Catherine Marchetti. I would love more information about how a box curriculum designed for classroom settings will be taught in a hybrid potentially online situation. What additional materials will be needed for at-home work versus in-school work? How we will fund these additional materials to adapt the new curriculum? How will the new curriculum help provide equitable outcomes if students have more support at home than others? It's become obvious to everyone right now how pivotal and necessary public schools are and the huge range of services that are actually provided on a daily basis. While we plan ahead for reopening schools, we have this unique opportunity to pause and reimagine what public schools could be, while of course considering the amount of trauma and need our students are going to come back with. I think it's obvious that it's time to invest in our students and our schools and fully fund public education. We need more nurses. We need more counselors, more social workers, more ELL teachers, more SPAD teachers. We need similar, smaller class sizes. And we need to pay teachers like the professionals they are. One-time stimulus money is helpful, but public education still hasn't recovered from the drastic cuts during the last recession 12 years ago. It's time we pre, we, we re-prioritize public aid and poor investments into our schools and students right now. I appreciate the countless hours and meetings you all have spent trying to whittle down the budget, but enough is enough. It's time to demand the state to do better for our students and our schools. Bismarck of Bimble. To prepare our students to be competitive and a global citizen for the 21st century workforce, RPS must have a robust curriculum rooted in the highest level of Bloom's taxonomy. I am in full support of this framework that is culturally, contextually, and creative in unleashing the potential in every child. This curriculum, in consultation with all stakeholders, must have a can-do, must-do, right-now attitude. We must not allow the paralysis of analysis to prevent us from doing what is right, fair, just, and noble for our children's education. If we adopt this robust, forward-looking curriculum, not only will we prepare our scholars to be transformative citizens, we can change communities, cities, nations, and the world all by daring to give our children access to quality and equitable education. Angela Dews. Good evening Chair Owens, Vice Chair Burke, School Board Members, and Superintendent Camus. I'm a teacher at Armstrong High School. I am writing to you about your considerations as you vote to adopt the FY21 School Board Budget. As you begin to finalize this budget, please consider what is good for the school district as a whole. It is not fair to select curriculums or programs based specifically on our new normal of the current time. We must continue to think about our future. The students and teachers of Richmond Public Schools deserve a curriculum that best meets our needs. Money has been allocated for a new K-8 math and reading curriculum and new materials for K-2 literacy.
You have faded out again, Ms. Wilson.
Am I back?
There, yes, that's good.
Okay. I feel that you should vote to proceed at this time with this purchase. If the administration can guarantee that the professional development is adequate to support teachers as they utilize this new curriculum, then you should vote yes. The data supports that what is being used now does not meet the needs of the majority of our students. As a high school English Language Arts teacher, I see the results of K-8 literacy efforts from the various schools. Certain schools should not have higher margins of success than that of others. At times, we are amazed and in awe figuratively and literally, amazed at the various skill levels and in awe of how the students made it to high school without learning how to read and comprehend the written word. That makes our jobs twice as hard. As a former K-8 teacher, I know how hard it can be to work with a curriculum that has gaps in its materials. One has to research and figure out ways to supplement the gaps. Our students deserve more. Our teachers and classroom support staff deserve more. We have many inequities, inequities across our district. COVID-19 pulled the covers off and revealed what teachers have been saying for years. We need a complete curriculum with sufficient support and training that comes as a full package. Aristotle said, "The whole is greater than the sum of its parts." Piec milling does not work, but only makes one work twice as hard, and the result of... My time is up. Carmen Foster. To the RPS School Board that eagerly support the planned rollout for the new RPS curriculum for the upcoming school year, I am impressed with the high-quality research that has been infused and is designed to support equity in education. This equity is long overdue. Whatever fears that some may have regarding the stress to implement this effort can be alleviated during the implementation phase after all. Fear is false evidence appearing real. These times of uncertainty must not keep our students and teachers mired in the way it's always been for the sake of comfort at the expense of quality. Reverend Martin Luther King once said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Leadership is about facing new paths with courage and conviction despite hesitation and doubt from skeptics. I trust that the administration will provide the necessary leadership to infuse our leaders with confidence and courage to initiate, to this, to initiate the shift to the kind of tier-one instruction that all RPS students deserve. That time is now. Teresa Kennedy. School Board Members and Mr. Camus, I'm a third district resident, and I am writing to support the math and ELA curriculum as well as the STEM programs at MLK and Henderson Middle. I know that you are hearing a lot of opposition to these, to these, keeping these in the budget. There are too much money at a time when there is too little money, and people are hurting too much. Well, to them, I would say, when is there going to be enough money? There will never be enough money for efforts to drive equity unless you prioritize them now. Standard and cutting-edge curriculum drives equity. STEM programs at school with underserved populations drives equity. As a member of the 2019 Res zoning Advisory Committee, I can tell you that the voices opposed in the curriculum and STEM in the budget are the same groups who scream for resource, resources first during rezoning. Here is an opportunity to lead a drive for equity through resources, and now it's too much money? When exactly will we feel comfortable spending money on initiatives that drive, that drive towards equity? When will prioritize all RPS kids and not just my RPS kids? My child has no more right to resources than any child in RPS, and yet the current pandemic and economic devastation it is causing is only going to increase the disparities between the haves and the have-nots. As a school system, if we cut a driver of equity like curriculum and STEM programs at a time like this, what does it say about us? Please, please keep math and ELA curriculum and STEM programs in the budget. We cannot cut such important efforts at a time like this. Thank you. Matthew Nielsen. Good evening. I'm writing to urge you to outline and provide guidance for how school might look this fall under potential and social distancing guidelines above anything else as we are faced with this pandemic. In my view, this takes precedent over, precedent to any new curriculum that is currently being proposed. I would think it prudent to be stimulating, to be simulating war game-style scenarios of how best to provide education to our students this fall since it is unprecedented. I'm concerned that the curriculum debate has been front and center while the task of getting everything ironed out for next school year is not getting the attention it deserves. It does not seem in the best interest of teachers or students to have additional changes such as brand-new curriculum in its ever-evolving environment. Have teachers consulted with, have teachers been consulted with during this process? I'd be curious to hear their thoughts. There seems to be a wide variance of comfort level for teachers providing or guiding online learning experiences for students across RPS. Having a standard and/or training lineup could provide teachers the tools and confidence necessary to provide new online experiences that might be required in the fall. Equity is important to RPS, and consistent plans and training would help to accomplish this goal for all students. Best regards. Rahul Shabool. Rahul Shabul, good afternoon, RPS School Board members. Thank you for your service for RPS students and families. I'm writing to you as an advocate for Aspire Students. The Aspire program has been a great program for students who have different barriers while they are at their comprehensive schools. Without this program, these students most likely would have had a higher risk of dropping out of school. Because of the support they are receiving at the program, they are able to successfully graduate. Please consider the keeping the program as it helps many students complete their education. Thank you. Cordell Watkins, dear board members, I want to to voice my support for the new curriculum expenditures. It is vital. The current curriculum is inadequate and does not engage students in the depth or breadth of what our learners deserve. Most teachers either dislike or despise what is currently in place. The disdain for the current curriculum is so strong that many teachers refuse to use it and/or request to use other curriculum resources. I support the new curriculum expenditures using mostly 2019-2020 funds. Now is the time to move new forward. With the likelihood of high-stakes testing not existing in the spring of 2021, this could be an ideal time to give us a transition year as teachers get accustomed to new curriculum. If it is not done this year, it would most likely be pushed back several years based on the financial ramifications of COVID-19. Next year, the board would have to make decisions between cutting people or adopting new curriculum. Meredith Thompson, I am asking the board to wait on voting on the proposed budget until the administration has provided scenarios with cost analysis for next year. Chesterfield School Board has already been provided six different plans for next year. How can you possibly vote on this budget without any scenario planning provided on the additional costs associated with schooling during a pandemic? Additionally, there's every likelihood that the funding from the city will even be lower than what has currently been proposed. If you spend money now on costly new curriculum or shiny new equipment for a STEM academy and the budget shortfall is even greater than proposed, you will be forced to cut teaching and staffing positions. Imagine how responsible this board will look having not planned with more foresight, given what we already know. Press pause on this budgetary process until you receive scenario planning for next year. This will also give opportunity for the administration to provide more clarity regarding the new curriculum they are recommending, including proposals, selection criteria, committee members involved, and implementation planning. Maybe this will have an impact on the general consensus by parents and teachers that this is not the year to stress children and teachers with implementation of costly new curriculum. This pause will also give administration time to answer all the lingering questions board members have repeatedly raised and have not yet that have yet to be addressed. Melinda Lawson, to whom it may concern. As a veteran teacher in RPS, I am delighted about the new curriculum adoption. I began my teaching journey as an eighth-grade English teacher in 2003. At that time, we were using elements of literature. It is unconscionable that teachers are still using this textbook to date. If we are to create 21st century learners, we must use the latest 21st century resources to do so. The students of RPS deserve the right to compete with their peers around the globe. We can't do that with outdated resources. Having a new curriculum would allow teachers to teach unified lessons that include rigor and alignment to standards which instruction often lacks. The uniformity district-wide will also help students who transfer from school to school within the district. Lastly, the district will greatly benefit from the resources and professional development that a new curriculum will provide. Thank you for your time. Bryce Lau, dear members of the School Board, please support the adoption of the proposed new ELA and math curriculum. I ask that you adopt this curriculum at tonight's meeting. As the parent of a student at Westover Hills Elementary School, I have seen firsthand how beneficial the Eureka Math curriculum is evidenced by both my daughter's personal understanding of math and our school's incredible SLO improvement. I think it is only just and right that all RPS students be afforded the benefits that my child has received. I am excited to see similar results from a high-quality ELA curriculum. Our school principal, Ms. L. Cooby, has taken the time to meet with our school community over Zoom to describe exactly how the proposed curriculum is an improvement over what we have, what we now have. I am impressed with the use of literature and I'm eager to see all RPS students benefit. Thank you for devoting resources to equip our teachers to bring high-quality instruction to all students. Please vote to adopt the new curriculum tonight. Dennis Williams, dear all, as a special education teacher in Richmond, RPS, I would like to support the endeavor outlined in dreams for RPS to adopt a unified and fully-aligned curriculum for all students and teachers in the district. Having used Richmond Math in the special education classroom, I can attest to its value in providing students with high-quality education. This is not to say the current Richmond Math curriculum does not need fine-tuning and modification, especially for students with special needs. However, it is to say that in using a high-quality curriculum and common texts throughout the district, I believe students and our community will be better served. Best regards. Breonna Nomi, I'm a community organizer with Legal Aid Justice Center's Just Children Program. My comments this evening reiterate those I submitted at last week's special budget meeting regarding RPS's continued failure to provide simultaneous translation services for Spanish-speaking families in school board meetings held online during the pandemic. This is an unfair and discriminatory practice that limits the ability of Spanish-speaking families to participate in school board meetings that provide vital information during a challenging time. The owners placed by the Division on Spanish-speaking families families to notify the board hours in advance of the meeting for the need for translation is unnecessary and exacerbates the isolation already felt by families struggling through this crisis. Additionally, public comments submitted submitted by the community should be read in the language they are submitted rather than what took place last week. At least one public comment was submitted in Spanish but subsequently translated, posted, and publicly read in English without any acknowledgement or accompanied Spanish reading. This should not happen as it is in clear contradiction to the district's leadership rhetoric around equity for all families. According to the U.S. Education Department, schools districts have an obligation to ensure meaningful communication with limited English proficient parents in a language they can understand and to adequately notify LEP parents of information about any program service or activity of a school district or SEA that is called to the attention of non-LEP parents. I remind the board and leadership that last year, RPS was unaware of over 800 English learners in the district, meaning that both schools and students lack support they would otherwise have received from the state educational agency. Additionally, according to data from the Virginia Department of Education regarding divisions obligations under the Every Student Succeeds Act, only 25% of English learners are graduating from RPS school. This number is shockingly low and reflects the need for greater investment, and my time is up. Melissa Ricky, Chairwoman Owens, my name is Melissa Ricky, Principal of Benford, writing to share some thoughts regarding curriculum adoption for the upcoming school year. Before I begin, I would like to thank you, the board, and the RPS leadership team for the incredibly hard work of navigating this pandemic in the name of equity, progress, and love, not just for our students, but for their families and our educators as well. For the last five years, I have been grateful to have the support of the board in service of students from across the city, and I have been proud of the work we've done together, and I want you to know that during this unprecedented time, that pride has swelled immensely. RPS has led the way through love and with urgency to meet the many needs of our community. We will continue to do this hard but critical work together, no matter the circumstances, and I hope that my brief perspective regarding curriculum adoption may be helpful during this uncertain time. When considering whether or not to adopt curriculum for the 2020-2021 school year when the future isn't so clear, does present quite the quandary, just how do we move forward without creating additional stress? As you know, there are many more questions than answers during this time. Will school reopen on time? Will students and teachers be face-to-face at all this fall? What if the virus comes back? Will we have to close again? Is this the right economic decision at this time? If we have to teach online, how will teachers get support? How will we form truly strong relationships with our students? How will encourage student participation? How do we teach other children if we are teaching our own at home? The list of really important questions that beg to be answered during this time is endless. The process of allowing our brains to ask these questions and begin thinking of answers, even if they don't seem like immediate solutions, is actually really great for our brains. Considering the what-if, then-this is the core of problem solving, and I know we can solve a lot of problems when we work together, just like we've done before these long 10 weeks of the pandemic. My time is up. Jennifer Blackwell, dear School Board members, I am writing in support of several items relating to English learners, the new curriculum adoption, our newcomer academies, and the 10 ESL teaching positions. As the English learner success specialist for the division, my position is different from other instructional specialists as my main role is to support the redesign and implementation of programming for English learners in RPS so English learners may thrive in and out of the classroom. When thinking about success for ELs, research indicates that the following must be part of the equation: rigorous teaching and learning supporting language acquisition, embedded social-emotional learning and support, which is culturally responsive and linguistically appropriate, and finally, family and community engagement. Without each of these research and evidence-based components, the success of our ELs in RPS will continue to suffer, which has resulted in a graduation rate of about 50% for our students. First, exciting and rigorous teaching and learning. This year, I had the honor to be part of the curriculum adoption team as the voice supporting our most marginalized group, our ELs. When going through the curriculum review process, my main focus was rigorous on grade level or beyond, learning for all and embedded tools that teachers could use to support all levels of English learners. The new curriculum will not only provide the scaffolds teachers need to facilitate their lessons for all students need, but EL education and Great Minds will also act as partners in providing professional learners for all of our teachers, whether we are teaching in the classroom, online, or both. And EL are consistently part of the conversation. Our ELs are not an afterthought anymore, which is especially important as the newcomer center at River City at River City Middle School opens this year. Newcomer teachers and academic content teachers who will become ESL certified throughout the year will teach our newcomers using this new curriculum, preparing EL students for years of rigorous learning. Second, skilled in support, and my time is up. Kristen Sabey, hello, I would like to express my support for adopting the Eureka Richmond Math curriculum. My daughter attends Westover Hills Elementary School and has benefited from the two years we have had with the new math curriculum. I can really see her understanding of math concepts as she completes her math work. Thank you. Keisha Ryan, good afternoon. I have been an educator for 31 years. I've spent 26 of those years serving the students and families of RPS. During that time, I've seen a lot of change in RPS, some good, some not-so-good. Among the not-so-good has been the widening achievement gap for our students who are economically disadvantaged and students of color. I'm not pointing fingers at RPS because this is a state and national issue. I've been reading a lot of comments about the new curriculum, and a lot of people seem to be concerned with the cost and how the adults involved will react to the change. I understand why these are things to consider. However, our first consideration has to be for our students. Why is, what is in their best interest? We have been using the current ELA program for six years, and it is not working. Currently, our students are receiving almost as much RTI as tier-one instructions due to import, due in part to lack in the curriculum. This fall, my teachers asked me why they were being set up for failure because they were once again being made to use an inferior curriculum. Our students need and deserve better. We are upgrading and building new facilities. We have been providing more relevant professional development. We are working to lessen our technology gaps. Improving our curriculum must be a part of that effort to improve teaching and learning for our students. This is the perfect time to hit the refresh button. Jeannie Boker, if you do opt for the STEM programs tonight, I hope you require the administration to implement programs so that the teachers and students at MLK and Henderson now feel deserving of rigorous learning and resources too. I hope you will also reinstate advanced math-science classes in sixth grade and other middle schools, giving with one hand while taking away with the other as bad policy. Again, please be responsible stewards of the schools and prepare for additional cuts in funding from the city. Please focus on a budget that plans for the various ways COVID-19 may change school in the 2021 school year. Please focus on teachers, additional staff to reduce class sizes, transportation, and more than a one-time deep cleaning. The continued push and politicization of the curriculum debate by the administration in the face of authentic feedback from parents and teachers is concerning. At this point, I'm assuming this is a foregone conclusion and was a foregone conclusion since Great Minds announced it was moving its headquarters to Richmond in 2019. What a disappointment that the opportunities for transparency and process from the administration are really akin to a Potomac village. Equity can mean many things, and the administration uses the word in broad strokes to justify this curriculum. Equity also means, according to Merriam-Webster, freedom from bias or favoritism. The implementation of these curriculum will impose undue burdens on teachers during the pandemic. I see an administration that continues to distrust teachers to teach. One looks back this administration's policies at DCPS and sees this legacy of teacher distrust is full. Please opt to trust our teachers. Elizabeth Waite, Superintendent Camus and Richmond City School Board. I'm a special education science teacher at Armstrong High School. First of all, thank you again for all the work you've put into dealing with the COVID-19 crisis up to this point. I'm sure you recognize the need for continued bold action as we move forward and start considering the next school year. To that end, I would like to advocate for moving high school to excuse me, to a four-by-four semester block schedule where students take only four courses every day per semester instead of the current model of eight classes every other day for the entire year. I have believed for many years that this model would be very beneficial to our students, but I think it would be even more so now. Here are some of the many advantages. Students would only have to focus on four subjects at a time, which would allow them more time to spend on homework or studying for each subject and be less overwhelming in general. Specific to the COVID-19 crisis, many students will likely still have work to complete from this school year, and only having four new classes to deal with will better help them and the schools juggle that load. Students would only have to focus on and retain information from the SOL for three months and take fewer SOLs at one time. Students who fail a course or an SOL in the fall can immediately retake it the spring instead of losing much of the information over the summer. It is easier to remain motivated and engaged with a subject if it is only three months long, especially for teenagers who are still developing their abilities to think long-term. This model matches the format of most colleges and would better prepare our students for that transition. This has the potential to improve attendance, as students would feel a greater impact of missing two or more days of school if they were all the same classes. It would create better continuity for teachers and lessons as there would not be an additional day between lessons for students to forget what they learned previously. This also makes it easier for teachers to plan multi-day activities, labs, and projects. Teachers would be teaching fewer students at one time, allowing you... And there's my time. Cecil Archris Sealy, greetings. As an educator with over 20 years of teaching experience in alternative schools, I want to share my thoughts about the Richmond Alternative School Aspire Academy program. Children who thought they could not achieve academically are shown how they can. Students are prepared academically according to state standards by highly qualified teachers using blended learning. Teachers work very closely with students and demonstrate unconditional love that they have never before gotten in school. Students who must heal from the uncertainties of shootings in their communities are made to feel safe at Aspire. Students are constantly being taught values to live by. Aspire helps the students to understand how to avoid the school-to-prison pipeline by teaching them better values and how to value themselves. They learn that if their communities are to become better places, it's up to them. This program is well worth keeping for the sake of our children and the greater community. Thank you for considering my opinion. Kay Richardson, I appreciate most of the School Board members supporting a 2% raise for teachers. We teachers would really like to see a 2% raise plus our step, not 2% combined with our step. We appreciate monies being tied all around and that other local departments are not suggesting raises for their staff. However, RPS is its own entity and must prioritize their own affairs. We do not have time to worry about other departments and what they are doing. Furthermore, we teachers are tired of sacrificing ourselves for everyone else. We teachers would like to see new curriculum rolled out after the pandemic when we've had a chance to adjust to however school will look like in the future. It is doable to adapt to both an adjusted school format and curriculum. However, learning how to teach with new material seems nonsensical when we don't even know what we are, when we are returning to school or how the format will be. Thank you to Jonathan Young and Kenya Gibson, especially for being the loudest proponents for us, for us teachers. Although they seem to be the outliers, they also appear to have the most innovative ideas to help RPS as a whole. Ebony Massey, I am the RPS K-12 ELA coordinator for RPS and work with our specialists, school leaders, and teachers toward the continuous improvement of our reading program. I am writing in support of the ELA curriculum adoption. Research says that a high-quality curriculum and a highly qualified teacher are two of the key pillars needed to improve student achievement. We know that our students deserve equitable access to both in order to close the significant achievement gaps and disparities that exist for so many of our students. We are in urgent need of a cohesive, aligned curriculum to use with all students. Access to such resources would allow us to keep moving through this moment as an RPS family with the support of strong partners to help us provide With the support of strong partners to help us provide powerful instruction to all of our students. Although we are unsure of what next school year will bring, I have witnessed our teachers transform as they rose to the occasion. With RPS at home, our virtual resources and daily student learning planes. Charlene Hayward, as a sixteen-year veteran, I am in support of the ELA and math cultural diverse curriculum. Characters, stories, and students' ideas will come alive in text-related themes around science and social studies. This is a powerful tool. Students will read about integrity and learn how to become productive citizens. Our scholars will be afforded an opportunity to read classic literature and revise the text by using their own imagination. And discuss why he or she changed the narrative of the story. This is critical thinking at its best. The current curriculum do not offer this. Teachers will be offered resources that scaffold instruction in a diverse setting. The math curriculum is completely hands-on. Concrete and pictorial learning are the demonstration stage of solving practical mathematical problems. With drawing inferences and critical thinking. Teachers will be provided hands-on training and a lot of practical resources. Autumn Neighbors, I chose a career in education because it is my deep belief that education truly benefits our society as a great equalizer. I remain dedicated to public education because I believe that informs citizens that can improve our world. I believe in our duty as a public school system to provide our students with the high-quality learning that will make them proactive. Contributing citizens of our world. Growing up in a blue-collar town in Western Pennsylvania, we lived a modest life. And no one in my family had more than a high school education in that. When the steel mills closed, my father saw the opportunity to create a better life for his family and moved us to Virginia. My parents always valued education, but with their lack of an academic background, they couldn't always provide the support for the rigorous learning needed. To prepare me for my dream to be the first college graduate in my family. They had to depend on the public school system. I was fortunate by chance to get a good enough education to confidently apply to and attend college, but as an educator. I know we can't leave things up to chance. How can we best ensure that we provide each of our children the support and materials needed to help them reach their highest potential? By giving teachers the right tools. I'm not just an educator, I'm also a parent of two Richmond Public Schools. Two children in Richmond Public Schools, so I care deeply on many levels. My kids have experienced both high-quality education by extremely skilled teachers and lackluster instruction. A new curriculum cannot replace a great educator and a supportive learning environment. But having a clear collection of, collection of learning resources. To provide structure and sequence for teachers can increase our chance of guaranteeing a high-quality education for all our students. Though adopting and implementing a new curriculum during these unsettling and unpredictable times and COVID seems daunting. I believe it is our duty as a public school system to continue to provide the most engaging. Exciting and rigorous teaching and learning. Which means providing our teachers with the necessary resources and professional development to do this. Adopting Eureka Math and EL education is the necessary step for our success in RPS. Lachandra Butler, this year, my school used Richmond Math curriculum from September to March. There were, were a few bumps along the way and while I do have some reservations about it and the way in which it was put together and rolled out this year. I believe in the philosophy and premise of the program, knowing that Dr. Epp wants only the best for the students of RPS. I have faith that with the curriculum adoption, there will be an adequate level of training. And support for teachers and staff before implementation. And that the experts have sufficiently aligned the curriculum with the Virginia standards of learning. I am confident that with the writers of the program creating a curriculum specifically for Virginia. And our standards, this will be a great asset to our district. As they teach or having a curriculum that is fully aligned is essential. I am confident that with the newly aligned version of the program. Along with opportunities to learn more about it before next year's implementation. This program could be a success for our students. The future is so unknown for all of us with returning in the fall. Not knowing what it will look like or how instruction will be delivered, of course, we are worried and anxious. So, the idea of having to learn and implement a new curriculum seems stressful and overwhelming. However, it will be more stressful to us as teachers going on with underlying resources on top of all the words of COVID-19. As a teacher, I would feel better knowing that the curriculum we have been provided with. Will make my time meaningful and effective while delivering instruction to my students. As we all know, teaching and learning is our most fundamental responsibility. We consider the possibility that teachers could not answer the call because of the pandemic. However, when called to action, so many rose to the occasion. We ended up with almost seventy ELA volunteer instructors representing most of our schools. We promised the volunteers instructional resources, training tools, coaching support, and most importantly, grace. Each person has voluntarily dedicated hours of their time to make these videos. Because they wanted to help our students and they trusted that RPS would support them along the way. Was it scary? Most definitely. Allison Kobe, dear school board members and district leadership, as well as any teachers. Parents and any other stakeholder who might be listening this evening. I would like to express my strong support for adopting both of the proposed curriculums for math and reading. First, Great Minds Eureka Math, Virginia Edition. My school piloted Eureka Math two years ago and continued using Richmond Math last year. We had challenges with alignment during the Eureka Math pilot and different challenges with Richmond Math particularly related to logistics. And timing of when materials were made available for teachers and students. I am thrilled about the possibility of continuing what we started. But now we'll have the expertise of Great Minds who are ensuring the Virginia alignment with the beauty of Eureka Math. I truly love the way that Eureka Math builds a strong foundation of number sense through the composing. And decomposing numbers using concrete manipulatives. And connecting them to representational models such as number bonds, tape diagrams, and area models. Second, making the case for EL education for open up resources for our reading curriculum. Let me begin by saying I have heard many complaints from my teachers over the past two years. About our current reading curriculum, benchmark literacy. From the lack of rigorous texts, both for the mini lesson and the follow-up independent practice to how dry the level readers are. I have just started to explore this curriculum, but what I have seen so far, so far, I'm very impressed. The K-2 framework includes a much-needed skills-building block. To become family with the three-five structure. I dig into the unit overview for fourth grade Model One, Unit One, which is anchored by a wonderful novel, Love That Dog. I love how the lessons tie in the other poems alluded to in the book. I love the idea that our fourth graders are starting that year with such a wide variety of poems. That represent a broad spectrum from the literacy canon to diverse perspectives to ones that are just fun to read. I can just imagine the foundation and time is up. And that was the last public comment.
My goodness. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
You're welcome.
Get a big drink of water now.
Thank you.
Okay, woo. All right. Now, we are going to go to four point oh one to receive the financial state. But before we do that, I want to thank all the people who sent all that in. And I know we had to cut some off and we still spent a long time on, on public information. I'm really glad we have the written ones so we can go back and refer to them. And really consider what you have suggested and, and talked to us about this evening. So, thank you. And do not hesitate to email us anytime, you know, because what you have to say to us matters a great deal. Okay, moving on to. Four point oh one, receive the financial statement for the period ending April thirtieth. Which one of you is regaling us with the financial statement this evening?
We don't have much to regale. The document has been uploaded.
Okay, and so everything is nothing unexpected and nothing we need to worry about?
No, as we'll discuss later in the agenda, we're at that point in the year when. We need to close things out and make final year transfers, so. Getting the board's normal authority to be able to do that will be very helpful.
Okay. Then, moving on to board action items. Now, we moved, let me find it. Six point oh three to come next. So, that is to receive for a first review, new ELA and math curriculum adoption. So, I assume that that is Dr. Epp.
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okeydoke.
I'm going to just share my screen here. Make sure I get permission on the screen sharing here.
You have permission?
Oh goodness. Ms. Hudasco or Mr. Cameras, you might have to help me out here. Something funny is happening. I'm gonna try one more time.
What are you trying to do, Tracy?
She's trying to share her screen.
For some reason, it's just being funny. Matthew might be able to. Sorry, give me one second. It's coming up right now.
Jason, you're muted.
Tracy, I can share the doc.
Okay, thank you.
One second. Good to go?
Yes, thank you. Okay, good evening, Board Chair Owen. Vice Chair Burke, school board members, Mr. Cameras. First, again, I want to just say thank you to. Everyone who has expressed their thoughts on the curriculum adoption. Not just through public comment over the last few weeks, but also in just, yeah, it's conversations with teachers and others. It's been, I think, just really powerful to, to hear how, how important this feels for people. And to also just honor where folks are in terms of concerns and questions. And so, I'm excited that we get to talk about tonight what we are talking about. We get to talk about the actual curricula and, and really get into it. As we, as I begin to start, I also have some members of my team joining. And I'll introduce them briefly and they will be jumping in later during the presentation and are here for questions. So, I have Dr. Autumn Neighbors, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, joining. We have our ELA Coordinator for K-12, Ebony Massey. Our Math Coordinator for K-12, Cassandra Bell. And then our Math Specialist for Elementary, Samara Booker. And our ELA Specialist for Secondary, Garen J. Richardson. So, just in case you see some other faces pop up, those are, are those folks. So, with that, let's, let's go ahead and jump in. So, so first, we just want to re-ground this conversation and what we're talking about and the why. Curriculum has as many definitions as it does teaching styles probably. And so, for us in RPS, we want to level set on what we see as curricula. And, and, and that it reflects what our teachers really ask for during our strategic planning process. And, and a curriculum goes beyond standards or even textbooks. And, you know, the way that we think about curriculum is that it serves as a comprehensive set of resources. And the idea here is it really, a high-quality curriculum allows teachers to focus on. Teaching and planning and preparation and really thinking about their individual students. Rather than creating information, lesson plans from scratch. Or spending their very precious time hunting around the internet or hunting through the myriad resources that are disconnected. To try to put together a meaningful set of learning experiences. Concretely, this includes things that we in education space refer to as a scope and sequence. And a scope and sequence is a roadmap for the year. It's also referred to as a, it's more explicit than a pacing guide. It goes, tends to go into more detail. Units of instruction, so rather than sort of disparate, rather than teachers having to take the state standards and figure out how to. You know, teach them in isolation, units of instruction and within a coherent curriculum. Group instructional tasks and experiences. That, that really culminate not just in students gaining the knowledge and skills. But also being able to apply and authentically use them. Also, a high-quality curriculum includes daily lessons. That give teachers the tools and strategies to support learning for students and to really help clarify what. I would call grade level mastery really looks like. And a common misconception with comprehensive curriculum. Is that daily, if it has lesson, if it has daily lessons, that that is perceived to be scripted. And I just want to be unequivocally clear, as we think about our core. Our core tier-one instruction, there's no world in which we would ever recommend or be satisfied with. A curriculum that is, is considered or utilized in a scripted way. There are certainly instructional programs out there for interventions and supports that, you know, have been shown and used in sort of certain systematic ways. Are effective, but that is not how we think about curriculum in the context of daily instruction. A crow's of curriculum also includes assessments, including formatted daily assessments. What is a check for understanding? How do you really know? And ask a set of questions or give students a task that is going to truly assess what they've just been taught against, you know, a standard or an expectation. It tends to have more sort of midpoint checks, like every couple of weeks. This is, this is not stop and stop everything and get on the computer and take a test. These are, a high-quality curriculum tends to have assessments. That really, really are student performance tasks. Or, or student assignments that teachers can evaluate against a whole, a group of standards. And then, it also includes instructional resources needed to effectively deliver the aforementioned information. This includes texts, in the case of ELA, and media, in the case of math, it might include manipulatives. Or other supplemental materials. And then, you know, we include professional development as part of a curricula. In my view, separating professional develop, as it relates to, you know, our foundational instruction. Professional development and curriculum have to be woven together because that is the core of what. We spend our time doing the bulk of the school day. Now, there are all, there's other professional development that teachers need for their individualized practice. But as it relates to curricula, a comprehensive curriculum includes thoughtful professional development that. Helps teachers not only know how, learn how to utilize the materials or familiarize themselves with the materials. It also helps teachers better understand the content or concepts. I think some of us forget, you know, a lot, a lot of us grew up, you know, did our training in the nineties or maybe even before. Long before there were college and career-ready standards. Not all of us as educators were taught to deeply know and master content. We know how to work with children and how to distill information and teach that. And so, professional development for curricula includes opportunities for teachers to deepen their own knowledge. While they are learning more, you know, effective strategies and, and supports for students. So, you know, did you skip? Okay, so, I should also say just quickly, you know, the role of curriculum and. The role of high-quality curriculum is incredibly important and the research just continues to bear this out time and again. And, and, and some, I have some of that research here on the slide and. I won't bore you all with quoting lots of research tonight, but I'd be happy for anyone who wants to dig in deeper. The, the research is unequivocal and the research cuts across various institution types. Be it, you know, very tier-one formal, highly-regarded, tier-one research universities like Johns Hopkins. We see it coming through nonprofit organizations that work with teachers and urban school districts across the country. And we also see the research bearing out even in publications of, you know, trade publications, be it Education Week. Or AFT's American Educator. In fact, somewhat recently. The Amer, about a few years ago, the American Educator submitted, published an article about curriculum being. The fundamental work of a school system. And that it is one of the most important ways to honor the work that teachers do. By providing them this full arc of instruction so that they can then do the hard work. Of really figuring out how instruction comes alive for their students. So, again, happy to dig more into that. And so, why do we need a high-quality curriculum for our students? I think we all know that our primary. I think we all know that our primary responsibility as a school system, we do so much for our community and our school systems wonderfully tend to be the centers for so much in our community. Our number-one job is to prepare our students for success in college and career and make sure they have everything they need, knowledge, skills, mindsets, tools, to pursue their fullest potential. And a high-quality curriculum is the essential foundation for this. It is by no means the magic bullet, but it is an unnecessary foundation. So, and what I mean by that is if we don't have high-quality curricula, we, you know, we can still, teachers can still work really hard to get there, but it's going to be exceptionally varied and again, much more challenging. And we're going to be, again, not really clear on exactly what every student in our grade level in our school should know. So it sets the foundation for what every student should master at each grade level and preparing them for the subsequent stage of their education journey. And I like to think about it this way, you know, what happens in second grade affects what happens in sixth grade and so on. Another way to think about this is when we look at our third-grade reading achievement data, despite incredible effort from our teachers and our school leaders and our staff, I mean, our folks work so hard. Our third graders, on average, we're still hovering around a one-third, only one-third of our third graders reading on grade level. And we don't really see that data change all that much by eighth grade. And then when you look at our graduation rate and where our students struggle, in particular to pass the SOL in ELA, this, we see those gaps, just unfortunately, the gaps don't close over time. Apps in a curricula, they actually grow. And the way that we talk about this internally, I've shared this with teachers before, is there's no world in which we're going to remediate our way to college and career readiness. So our students have to have a strong foundation that's at a grade-level standard to enable teachers to then provide the individualized support that our students require. A high-quality curriculum is also, it's written by master teachers and curriculum experts who deeply understand the progression of learning, which is critical to not only understanding the content long enough to remember it to pass a test. That's not really the goal here. The goal is that students have deep mastery, that they can then use that knowledge for the next stage in their learning journey. And I'll tell you, I do not pretend to know the intricacies of math progressions or I certainly did not know for many years how to really break down the ability to analyze complex text starting from third grade all the way to ninth grade. So we can turn to curricula as educators to help us see from folks who just deeply know this work and are, you know, master teachers and content experts who work together to really outline a sequence of learning. I've said this before, you know, at the end of the day, the most important piece is that a high-quality curriculum really sets high expectations and meaningful learning experiences for what our students should experience every day so that their minds are intellectually engaged and we are preparing them for college and career. And I think giving our students this will actually increase engagement in their day-to-day schoolwork. And as I shared with the research base, Johns Hopkins did a sort of lit review somewhat recently. And, you know, their big takeaway was how unequivocal the research base is, that a strong curriculum can boost student learning, but a bad one is even worse than not having one at all in some cases. And then when we look at, oh, you want to go to the next slide there, Jason? So, for example, I have to just move you guys off my screen here. So when we, a lot of curricula do not provide stu, I said a lot of classroom tasks and instruction, through no fault of our teachers, by the way, do not provide our students the level of challenge of grade-level work. So for example, one of, if you've read The Opportunity Myth, which I encourage you to do, it looks at the student experience in four large school systems of varying demographics and geographies. And it studied hundreds of thousands of students' experiences and their student work. And it looked at what they were being given. And they even controlled for students kind of incoming performance ability. And what they found was that students were succeeding on the work we were giving them. We just weren't giving them work that was aligned to college and career-ready standards. So put another way, so our students are meeting what we asked them to do, but they're not prepared for their future because what we're asking them to do doesn't give them a chance to even stretch and show that they are ready to read that college and career-ready bar. So, you know, in terms of why does a high-quality curriculum matter for students, we could, I could talk for many, many more hours about why it matters so much for kids. And some of our public comments spoke to that as well, in that our kids just deserve for their brains to be challenged and for their intellect to come alive and for them to be, have work that is meaningful and engaging and worthy of their time. And we need a high-quality curricula for teachers because it's really hard to do that. It is really hard to create a coherent, high-quality curricula with meaningful tasks and do all the preparation that teachers need to do prior to instruction. And then also look at their data and figure out how, what they need to do to meet the needs of their individual kids, consider the students' relationships, consider their own, what they themselves need to figure out, consider the instructional methods, et cetera. And so a high-quality curriculum is essential for teachers. And at the heart, I've always believed that this is about respecting teachers. It means giving them the tools they need to do their jobs effectively. And one of those, not, it's not the panacea, but one of them is a high-quality curricula. Because if our teachers can start with that and then we take the talent that we do have, our teachers can then, you know, soar because they have the information that only they, only our teachers know our kiddos. And so they can spend their mental time and energy thinking about what specifically does, you know, little Tracy in my classroom need in order to be successful with this content. And so it also means they don't need to reinvent the wheel. I mean, the stakes are so high for all of us, for our kids, but we also hear how tired and overworked and we know our teachers are. They give so much. Let's not reinvent the wheel. Let's let them go further. So with a strong foundation, they can go even further with our kids. So that's one big piece. And then, you know, the other piece, again, just as a school division, is when we fail as a school division to adopt and consistently support, that's the second part of this, we have to adopt and support a high-quality curriculum, teachers lose that essential foundation. And at best, teachers are left to their own devices to figure this out. And that's where we end up with instruction that is just varied and, you know, things that say, that doesn't make sense. Why are we doing that? But at worst, what students learn day by day, classroom by classroom, year by year, is highly variable. And here then is where the gaps grow and teachers continue to receive students who have gaps because they have not been prepared each year along their education journey. Just a statistic on this, our teacher, teachers in general spend seven to 12 hours a week just looking for and/or creating instructional resources, drawing from many, many variety of sources, many of them which are unvetted. The number-one source, when teachers nationally were surveyed a couple of years ago, the number-one source of daily instruction was Pinterest, followed by Teachers Pay Teachers and Google. And while all of those things can be very powerful tools for how all of us do, for good ideas and things that are our ways to make teaching come alive, I don't think as a school system, we, given what our kids require, that we can, that that can be the alternative for our teachers. They simply deserve more and deserve for us to give them something that doesn't require them hunting and pecking for high-quality resources. And, you know, at the end of the day, equity, it's a word we all, a lot of people use, and we use it in many different ways. But when we talk about equity, it is about ensuring that our students are prepared and on par for, above and beyond, or at least the level of education that any of their more affluent peers in high-performing school districts would receive and certainly within our own school division. But I think we have to think broadly about this. If we are truly going to put our students on a path for education to be a transformational factor in their lives, every RPS student in every classroom has to have access to the same high-quality curricula, which means we are asking our kids to use their brains in ways that are age-appropriate, that are at the grade-level expectation, and most importantly, are worthy of their inherent beautiful intellectual potential. The Education Trust, a nonprofit whose mission is similar to many of us, is to close opportunity gaps that disproportionately affect students of color and students from low-income families, found just a year, a couple of years ago, that absent a high-quality curriculum, school districts struggle to ensure students have access to high-quality materials. This isn't new information, but the research is continuing to bear it out. I'll also say, the Education Trust did a national study. They looked at 85,000 instructional tasks across the country, in particular in urban school systems, and only 4% of those tasks or assignments, only 4%, were on grade level. And again, grade level is not just a thing we have for grades or for the SOL. Grade level is saying, you have what you need at this stage of your education journey to be prepared for the next stage so that you're not constantly walking in behind and trying to catch up. I referenced The Opportunity Myth earlier, and again, completed by a nonprofit that works with urban school districts across the country. And students of color and students living in poverty experience the most significant differences in what they are exposed to academically. They found that students in mostly-white classrooms, even when controlling for prior academic performance on, you know, formal assessments, students in mostly-white classrooms were three times as likely to be exposed to academic assignments that met grade-level expectations than in classrooms composed primarily of students of color, despite the fact that the two groups tended to perform similarly on the same assignments. So because of the, because of our students' demographics, and this is a nationwide problem, I'm not saying it's just an RPS, there's a nationwide problem about whether or not we are giving all children, and in particular, children of color and children living in poverty, work that shows that we have high expectations for what they are truly capable of. And so this is. There's an echo. Try that again. So this study showed that students, when we give them work that is on grade level, they can do it, but most often, students of color are denied the opportunity to even try it. We also saw four out of 10 classrooms with a majority of students of color never received one single grade-level assignment. And again, I don't think this comes from a place of intentional harm. I think that this comes from teachers and school district leaders wanting to help their students where they are. They, we don't want our kids to struggle. We don't want them to feel bad. We want to help them with where they are. The downside of that is if we, if you only focus on where you are and not where you need to be academically, it's really hard to ever get ahead. And the research bears that out too. By giving students assignments, even if they're academically behind, by giving them challenging assignments, just having the challenge increases academic success. By having grade-level work, even if you're under, even if you are performing below grade level, access to high-quality work does something, does something to our brain where we tend to rise to the occasion. Again, it's not just a simple yes/no, but it's because teachers who do that also understand that they have, they also have the time to give kids the supports they need to help them reach that grade-level standard. So with that, that is, you know, ultimately, some of the most important reasons we feel that we have to do a curriculum. And just briefly, before I turn it over to Dr. Neighbors to talk about our process, I want to share that I hear folks expressing a desire for curricula. And I hear a concern about this moment in time and where we are. And so the last question might be, well, why now? And we can talk more about that in the coming weeks. We'll be talking with teachers and getting their insights into what this might mean for them and what implementation might look like. But I would say the why now is for all the reasons we aforementioned. And we are prepared and have already, you know, wanted to work with our teachers to really think through what would this look like in a, in our current, in a COVID environment. And so I just want folks to know that that is something that is not lost on us. We're hearing you and we are doing a lot of thinking and discussion with teachers about that and eager to continue to talk to more teachers. I would like Dr. Neighbors to take us through the process we used. As I understand, there are some questions there. Go ahead, Dr. Neighbors.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to walk us through the process and I'll add a little bit of the timeline to this slide around the review and feedback. So this process actually began last March, March 2019. We reached that knowing that in our strategic plan and dreams for RPS, that adopting a curriculum for ELA and math was a priority. And for all the reasons why, that Dr. Epp explained earlier, why this is important for RPS. So we began in March 2019 and we sent out actually a survey to have teachers, principals, community members, parents, to either self-nominate or to be nominated to serve on a curriculum review committee. That, we had 62 different engagement people, from teachers, parents, we had a VCU professor, a variety of people that came together in March and said, you know, we started the conversation of what are we looking for? What is the criteria that we really want in a curriculum? What have the successes been in the past and kind of a needs assessment? And then we came back together in April and we drafted, which we'll share in a minute on one of the slides coming up. What was our criteria? What were we really looking for in a curriculum? But because we wanted to go beyond what a typical curriculum review would be, which would be from the state policy that we can choose from the state-adopted list and from our local policy that we can choose from the state-adopted list, or if we choose not from the state-adopted list, we would have to mimic a process much like the state-adoption process. But as well, we would have to follow, put out a request for proposal if we desired to pull a choice beyond our state-adopted list. And knowing that at that time, we were already had a pilot for a math curriculum that was not on the state-adopted list, we wanted to make sure we had a range in order to reach out and get the best curriculum for our students. So because we wanted to pull beyond the state-adopted list, including what's on the state-adopted list, we put out a request for proposal and had to then follow the procurement law that goes along with that, which requires confidentiality until negotiations and a contract is complete and brought to the board for approval, which is why we're able to have these open conversations here today. So as part of the RFP, we included all the criteria that the curriculum review committee put together as our scope of work, and that was then launched in December 2019 and opened. The evaluation committee was a smaller committee comprised of teachers, school-based coaches, principals, parents, and division staff that came together and had to review any submission that would have been submitted through the RFP. I believe we had 28 total submissions, which had many different, some companies could submit many different curriculums, both math and ELA. They were divided into the segments of K-2, 3, 5, and 6, 8 for ELA and K-5 and 6, 8 for math. And we evaluated those based on the rubric that is in the RFP, which we'll share in a second. And then finalists were, they were scored and then finalists were selected to share with our, both our curriculum review committee, the 62 members that were part of March 2019, as well as having some community outreach. So March 5th, we invited all of the 62 members back together to have the initial review of the finalists. We had three finalists per grade band. And then we held four community, curriculum community conversations, March 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th at four different areas of the city and four different schools. At each of these meetings, the finalists presented their curriculum, but myself, Cassandra, and Ebony, who you'll meet in a minute, are. are coordinators for math and ELA, also were there to answer questions, to talk about our process, to talk about how, what are the next steps after this? And then we also encouraged all of our participants, we had a feedback form. And knowing that this is right at the beginning of the talks of COVID, so we also created a website that had all access to all the curriculum resources and also the feedback form at that point. So the curriculum review committee, when they came together, these were their priorities, and these are, again, were stated in their scope of work. That, as Dr. Epp stated earlier, it's based on rigorous grade level content. And that we know of profile of a graduate, we wanted to really see that the curriculum built on those five Cs of collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, communication, and citizenship. It's essential in order to mirror the process that the state has, that they, it has to show alignment to our Virginia standards of learning, knowing that that's the foundation of the standards that we need to teach. We wanted lessons that included both scaffolding enrichment, knowing that our students vary across the city, and we wanted to make sure that the lessons and units and resources really can meet the needs of all of our students. We, we heard the teachers talking about assessments. We wanted to make sure there is assessments embedded in there, that they were quality assessments, that they, we felt that it really truly assessed students' progress with the curriculum. And we knew we wanted something digitally. So in the RFP, we did ask for all the curriculum both to be submitted as hard copies and digitally, knowing that we would need and now even more than ever. And we also wanted to look at the instructional planning and how, looking at our academic reviews of the past, we wanted to make sure that the resources really helped to support our teachers in the planning. Specifically for math, I'm going to ask for Cassandra Bell, who's our coordinator for mathematics, and Samara Booker, our elementary mathematics instructional specialist, to share a little bit about what they heard from the teachers, principals, parents, and community members around what were our wants for mathematics.
Good afternoon or good evening, I'm sorry. This is Samara Booker. I currently serve as the instructional specialist for elementary math. I've also been an elementary teacher in RPS, a Title I math teacher and a math coach as well. When that committee came together, we put together a team of classroom teachers, math coaches, elite math teachers, as well as some school-based leaders. And we pretty much asked them, what are your must-haves for a math curriculum? And what needs to be in each daily lesson? And what you see there is a list of their must-haves. That conversation went really, really deep. And what we found that teachers really understood was that our standards now, our current standards are very much, they're rigorous. You know, I don't know how else to say it. They're very rigorous. And incorporating concrete representation and abstract math strategies is pertinent to that conceptual understanding that runs through our current standards. And thinking about that bullet number three, that it builds students' computational fluency, conceptual mastery, critical thinking, and mathematical reasoning that speaks directly to the process goals that are outlined in our video E curriculum framework. So our teachers had a really deep understanding of what is expected of students for mathematics and knowing that that needed to be reflected in the curriculum that we chose.
We also wanted to ensure that the curriculum that was selected was vertically aligned to algebra readiness. Research is clear that Algebra I is clearly the gatekeeper course, meaning simply that students must master this content before they will be successful at more advanced mathematics. So preparing students for success in algebra or algebra readiness has to begin early on in elementary school. NCTM, the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, recommends that students develop a solid foundation and understanding of algebraic concepts at early stages to adequately prepare students for middle school and high school. And so students who receive a strong math foundation in early grades are much more likely to be successful in algebra later on. And it opens students up for success in high school and beyond, in college and in their later careers.
And we had new math standards that were just introduced that year in the 1819 school year. And then for ELA, we knew that the new standards were going to be implemented in the 1920 school year. And so we had, we had specific needs to help support those. And Ebony Massey, who's our coordinator for ELA, K-12, will be joining us as well as Garen J Richardson, our instructional specialist for secondary ELA.
Good evening, everyone. This is Garen J Richardson. And when we began this process, I wanted all of the teachers to understand the status of ELA, if you would. So we discussed an article, and the article discussed in the 1990s, a team of researchers led by Donald Hayes. They engaged in a series of studies and they analyzed textbooks and the difficulty of the texts in these books. And the research consisted of an analysis of 800 school textbooks published between 1919 and 1991. And it was found that the difficulty of the text had been significantly reduced year by year. And the data also aligned to the decline in the SAT scores. So the studies show that the amount of sentences decreased in textbooks. It showed that the sophistication of the words in the books decreased. And while the analysis showed that the textbooks had become progressively easier, the difficulty of everyday reading like newspapers, magazines, job applications, loan applications, military interest exams, driving tests, things that our students need to do and take every day, those consistently maintained their rigor. So the textbooks were decreasing in rigor, but everyday life and everyday reading were increasing. So we knew textbooks were easy and they denied students the language and the information that they needed to progress. So it was important for the team to know the status of education with regard to textbooks. And then we looked at how that particular study and other studies conducted led educators to understand the need to increase rigor in texts. And so we discussed, as Dr. Neighbors said, this year was our first year of implementing the 2017 ELA standards. And when I looked at VDOE before joining the call, I wrote down, it says explicitly, "Students must determine the meaning of complex texts and making logical inferences." That's in the 2017 standards. And so that's saying that VDOE expects our students to be able to do these things. And through the 2017 standards is evident that VDOE has high expectations. So when we began this process, I needed everyone on the team to understand that a rigorous curriculum is the only way to level the playing field at this point.
Thanks, Garen J.
Thank you, Garen J. I did want to add that also, an important part of this curriculum adoption for that team was the idea of a structured or systematic phonics program. And this was very important, looking at the data that we had in our district and knowing that students needed to have those foundational skills in order to be able to access the complex text that Garen J was just referencing.
So knowing that that was our criteria and those were our wants, we had big wants. Then this was how we evaluated the, all the curriculum that came that was submitted through the RFP. We first, and the largest chunk was we looked at the statement of needs, so everything that we just shared of the last two slides, aligning to the standards, that there's vertical alignment, a clear progression of skills. And then it was, it was useful to use. It would be easy for our teachers to utilize and for our instructional leaders to support. In addition, 20% was about the implementation plan, because we know that we've all been part, I think many of us, I should say, we've been part of adoptions or changes that maybe haven't gone over well. And so we wanted to make sure that the partner that we'd be partnering with had a clear implementation plan. And also it fit our vision of an implementation plan that was ongoing, that there was really deep professional learning and that they would truly be a partner with us. We also looked at research and references, looking at, you know, what school districts have used this curriculum before? Do the school districts serve a population as Richmond serves? Has it been used in Virginia? We looked at all different, the references, the research, the research base of the curriculum. And then finally, the overall cohesiveness of the proposal. And then the last part, the pricing model, is then scored by our procurement department. So I went over this when I talked about the committee and the timeline, because I feel like they're so interwoven. But we did begin this process again last March with the review committee that was, that came together. We released the RFP in 2019, December. The evaluation committee came together and reviewed all of the submissions. March 5th is when we brought together those 62 individuals from the, from the previous year to review the finalists. And then we had our curriculum conversations. We also added, because we knew a lot of our families, teachers, et cetera, maybe couldn't come out on the evenings. We did add another opportunity for people to see the materials, because, you know, you could see them digitally on the website, but maybe you wanted to like, you know, open up the book and see what they look like and like actually touch the materials. So we did offer another opportunity where they're housed at Clark Springs on Friday, March 13th. But that again was the first day of when we, the schools were then going to be closed timber early at that point. Throughout then, the evaluation committee came back together virtually then and reviewed all the feedback that was provided from the community curriculum conversations as well as the curriculum review committee, and then made their final scoring. Those two finalists, which we're presenting today, contracts were negotiated over the past month. And then today is the day we're proposing these curriculum.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Autumn and team. So that brings us to the recommendation of the evaluation committee. And as this process goes, the recommendation goes from the committee, goes to the owner of the RFP process, the programmatic owner, which was Dr. Neighbors, and then that goes to procurement. So as much as I wanted to, you know, take a look at all of this stuff, I too had, my formal role was to sign, as the chief academic officer, was to sign off on the selection criteria that we already covered. But I just really want to thank both the curriculum committee and the evaluation committee for their countless hours of work and for their very thoughtful recommendation. I know they had several good choices. And I would have been pleased with any of the, likely any of the finalists they were looking at. But I'm just very, very grateful for the many, many hours. This is definitely a labor of love. And if you're curious about that, you can kind of look at all the materials in Clark Springs that our folks went through. So in terms of our ELA selection, we have, the committee has recommended and we are proposing to the board to adopt EL education via Open Up Resources. So a couple of things about, about this curriculum real quick. First, I want to say, so our current elementary school ELA adoption is Benchmark. While Benchmark does have a newer version that aligns to the Virginia current standards, that would have been a new adoption. But our current Benchmark curricula is no fewer than seven years old. And it's pretty customary for school divisions, every, you know, set six to seven years, to update curricula or textbooks, particularly in, yeah, in the core content. So that was that last adoption. And that adoption cost at a minimum about $3 million. And that didn't include all of the components. We had to then go back and supplement with substantial components. And that organization have been, you know, nice partners to us, but that's kind of if, if we, our current adoption, I just want to make sure folks know for elementary is about seven years old. And similarly for math, which was, for elementary was Envisions, and that cost about $2 million. And we'll get into budget later, but I want people to just have some context. What's most striking though is going back at least to 2007, we cannot identify any record of a formal middle school math or ELA textbook or curriculum adoption. And I think we heard tonight, at least from one public comment, maybe that was as old as 2003 with one of the resources referenced. So I just want folks to understand, we currently do not have a math or ELA adoption for middle school textbook or otherwise. And then I shared the state of our elementary school adoption. So this new adoption with EL education, first EL education, some of you may have heard of this as an organization. It's short for expeditionary learning. And expeditionary learning was created in partnership with Harvard's Graduate School of Education and Outward Bound, which is an organization that does expeditionary learning with students using the outdoors. And they joined together to create a character-infused program that built strength around teamwork, courage, compassion, and a real active approach to learning. And then this created these sort of founding principles of the EL model. And so these are, you know, the responsibility for learning. These are solitude and reflection, like appreciating the natural world, understanding success and failure go together. That collaboration and competition are must-work in concert. That, you know, diversity is exceptionally important. And so EL is an open education resource. They created a curricula. They originally created this curricula in partnership with New York State. And that was originally utilized most heavily in New York City DOE, where they saw substantial gains for students in the pilot program. This, this curricula has since been adopted and utilized across the country in school systems that look very similar to ours in terms of our student population, but also the extent to which our achievement data has waned. But it's also, you see this in all types of school districts across the country. And there's three dimensions of achievement for this curricula. One is a real focus on mastery of knowledge and skills with a particular emphasis on deep proficiency and understanding and the application of learning with grounded in thinking critically and being able to communicate that through writing, speaking, and presentations. And when our teachers dig into this, you'll see through the student work, students are being, being asked to show their learning in many different modalities. Added benefit in terms of being strong, in addition to strength of building strong readers and writers and thinkers, there's a really strong character component embedded. And, and then also a real emphasis on student work. And really making sure that we're asking students to create meaningful, meaningful learning products to show what they're thinking and to show their ideas. Additionally, this curricula in particular is cross-curricular. For strengthening reading achievement, we know through the science of reading that students who have repeated spiraling access to similar related content, or they call that content domains and edu jargon. When the integration of science, social studies, and literature are there, it can accelerate the reading comprehension ability of students. And in particular, this is one of the ways that students who are struggling readers can accelerate and eventually strengthen their reading comprehension, even if they are behind in reading level. This is something some like veteran teachers know, that when you double up the content and topics, students can become very strong readers. And then there, you'll see a heavy emphasis on inclusivity and looking where students are exposed to differences across cultures. But also inclusivity within the classroom. This curricula, like Arika, is built on something called the Universal Design Learning Framework, which is a set of principles that have been developed for curriculum providers that say this is what has to be true for students who are English learners and for students who have IEPs in order to make this accessible as a baseline. So what's really, I think, extra exciting is this curricula alone gives students who have these extra, who have these additional needs or different needs, the design of the curricula itself for all students is designed to also reach the strategy, use strategies that work with students with IEPs or English learners in particular. So there's less dedicated differentiation that teachers have to do. I'll kick it over to my team to add any additional thoughts on this and also take us through some of the text features.
Yep, thank you, Tracy. I did want to add the
I did want to add, the last time I spoke, I talked about the importance that the committee had or the, the priority that the committee made around the K2 structured phonics approach. Well, with EL education, they take a holistic approach to teaching students how to read, but also to teach them how to think critically, as well as those other dimensions that Tracy mentioned earlier. And what's nice is that they not only have whole group instruction, but they also have intentionally designed for students to be able to know how to read by the end of second grade, because their small group instruction is designed specifically around building those foundational skills. And then when they go into grades three, five, though, that small group instruction shifts to allow students to be able to access that complex text through small group instructional experiences with their teachers, as well as providing opportunities intentionally embedded into the curriculum for our ESL students and our students with disabilities. They do this through a multimodal approach, whereas they're not just reading this text, but they're talking about the text, they're going through acts, songs, music, videos, and other ways to help collaborate and communicate. And that's just on the elementary end. I'll kind of toss it over to Karen J to speak a little bit about the complex text once they get into middle school.
Sure. So for EL education, it does indeed embed complex texts, but it also has anchor texts and research texts and suggestions for independent reading texts, which are not on grade level. So although we will always be anchored and in complex texts, it does have various texts that the students can access. When we look at this slide, the featured text that explore diverse cultures, I think it's important to notice how culturally relevant the texts are. As an urgent priority to all students, we must grant access to grade appropriate assignments, no matter their race, SES, or performance level, or implicit biases. We show students that they matter when we give them access to instruction that engages them with culturally relevant material.
When we talk about that idea of the diverse cultures, it's also important for students to not only see themselves, but also to see aspects of the world. And that's also one of the promises that EL educational, one of the intentional designs of EL education was to make sure that students not only saw themselves reflected in the world, to Karen J's point, so that they understand that they matter and their voice matters, but also to be able to see perspectives of other cultures, so that they can also see connections between themselves. When we look at, in terms of that pairing of the fiction and the nonfiction text to explore the world, this is also very important, especially when we talk about the importance of vocabulary instruction and building that background knowledge for students. So not only now, when they read a fictional novel, say the island of the blue dolphins, or they have brothers in hope, we also look at a long walk to water and we're able to pair that. And students have not only the story and not only the importance in being to build empathy for those characters, but they also understand the context and the environment in which those characters are living, because it has that strong social studies and science connection.
Can we go back for that one second? Just if we look at those, those anchor texts, you see that they're both about some, a character in Sudan. And again, we show our students how we feel about them, by what we place in front of them. We show our students that they matter by allowing them to engage in learning that validates and celebrates their narrative, like their native language, their native voice, their identity, their culture and their experiences. And a high quality curriculum should be free of instructional biases. And our students should know that they matter. And looking at both of those texts, I believe those students, if we placed those books in front of them, they would feel like they matter. They would feel like they are reading something that's culturally relevant and relatable.
Thanks Karen J, because as we go on into the next component for EL education, and I know we didn't have that slide about the social justice, but I do think it's important because as we talk about students being able to see themselves in the world and continue to go forward, it also helps them to understand that aspect of social justice and their role in being able to promote and understand things that are happening in the world and the role that they have in being able to impact that. And then finally, we're talking about that piece about the pair text and the media that address current events. We know that there is so much more to literacy than just reading a book, but we also have to understand that the news is part of that multimedia aspect. We know that videos, songs, newspaper articles and other types of texts that students are going to encounter in the world, they need to be able to read that text, be able to comprehend that text and start to make some, make their own understandings and start to draw their own conclusions around what that means. And so that is also an important component here when we talk about the features of the paired text with other media components.
Thank you all. And so we were, I was going to, you know, we're trying to show as much as, you know, we're explaining. And I was going to do a little mini lesson tonight, but I think for the interest of time, we're going to skip and come back to that at our next meeting. But next time you will be hearing from me and Hidden Figures, which is one of the first texts that our sixth graders, if adopted, would tackle in the fall. And I'm going to go ahead and kick it over to the team. Our math recommendation is Eureka Math, the Virginia edition. And again, this is another curricula that, this is the most widely adopted curricula across the country. This started as an open, this started as an open education resource as well. So both of these, both of these organizations that we would be working with, in this case, Great Minds, these are organizations that began writing this curriculum and developing it to make it completely available to teachers such that there was not a exorbitant cost for our school divisions to be able to utilize high quality materials.
Thank you, Dr. Eft. I'm just get started here and give us a little background about our journey with Eureka. So Eureka Math is the foundation of our current Richmond math pilots. During the 2018-19 school year, we introduced Eureka as a pilot with eight of our elementary schools. Each of the piloted schools saw gains on the 2019 SOL, or Standards of Learning exam. Some schools even demonstrated double digit gains. So as a result, the majority of our schools opted to participate in our extended pilot this school year. Thus adopting Eureka would really provide continuity, not real change for our students and teachers alike. Additionally, Great Minds is currently in the process of developing a Virginia specific version, based in part on the work that our curriculum designers have worked on this year. So we will actually serve as leaders in our state to bring this nationally acclaimed curriculum to Virginia. So it's really exciting for our division to be on the cutting edge. I'm excited about it. Formally adopting the Eureka math curriculum will really enable us to provide more support directly from the developers of Eureka, specifically around front loading professional development as early as the summer. That's a piece that we were missing this year because we had an extended pilot and we were not in partnership with Eureka. And that's what's really exciting, that we'll have an opportunity to get started. And what time is better than now, particularly in this time of COVID, than to provide our families, our students, our teachers with a quality rigorous curriculum? And I'm going to pass it along to Samara now to jump into a few of the points that we have on the slide here.
So Eureka is a rigorous and engaging math curriculum, and it follows a research-based progression from K to eight. And so this is done with the consistent use of specific math representations and strategies across grade levels. And so doing that supports students as they build their conceptual understanding of math and their ability, their ability to use that understanding and apply it across strands and to make connections to other topics and other content areas. And so when we think about the, the three critical components of this curriculum, it speaks back to, or refers back to what our committee members said they wanted in a curriculum. So conceptual understanding, that's the how and why behind why math works. So that speaks directly to the CRA model of instruction, which consists of concrete, representational and abstract. It also speaks to the procedural skill and fluency. And when we say fluency, we don't mean math dashes. We mean having students to have flexibility and automaticity and working with numbers. And then the application to real world context. So this speaks directly to the video E process goals. Again, that's what video E wants us to focus on, the process goals and those essential knowledge and skills. And so when we think about wanting our students to be math problem solvers and we want them to communicate about mathematics and we want them to reason about math beyond just getting a right answer. We want them to make connections across strands and across content areas. So not just keeping my, not just keeping math as something we teach as isolated skills, but something that we teach that is really connected to other content areas. And then when we think about deep, deep math concepts, not just memorizing rules and not just quick answers, we think about students building math confidence and understanding that the math that you're learning and being able to see the connections and the consistency across the contents, the units, the grade levels, that builds math confidence. For students who might lack that confidence, maybe they are transient, maybe they've been sick, they've missed some school. Maybe they have a language barrier. The ability to be successful with math and see themselves as being successful with math is very important. And the curriculum does a good job of that because everything builds. And one of the public comments spoke to the latter that's within each lesson. So there's something in the lesson that will make sure that every student has access. And that prior knowledge, building on that prior knowledge, and not just the knowledge, but the use of strategies, that is powerful and that's what happens in this Eureka content.
And a couple of other just quick things about Eureka to know, because it is what's considered an OER resource, the foundational version, which means anybody can go online and download it and use it. That is part of the VDOE's online education platform called Go Open VA. And for, you know, one of the main questions that we, that folks had about our, about Richmond math is because Eureka was not, like many curricula, is not developed specifically for the state of Virginia, but aligns to nationally recognized college and career ready standards, including the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics recommendations. You know, there was concerns about alignment. So just to ensure and take any of those concerns off the table, Great Minds will be partnering with us and our version, the version we are adopting is going to, is going to be Eureka, Virginia. And again, Richmond, if adopted, we get to lead the state in bringing this nationally utilized curricula to, to our Commonwealth. Tracy. I'm going to move us along. Yes, does someone jump in?
Yeah, I just want to also add that many of the EL education, we talked about ELA resources and curriculum are also on the Go Open Virginia platform.
Thank you. And, and so just again, I'm not going to go too detailed, but folks can reference this. The data, in addition to research on just the role of any high quality curricula, the data on Eureka has, has borne out quite extensively in large school systems such as, this is Shelby County in Tennessee. We're also seeing in Detroit, Michigan, which is also using EL, we're seeing pretty significant gains in math proficiency at school divisions, you know, as big as or bigger than us with similar challenges and demographics. And Cassandra mentioned this, but when we presented the mid-year map data to you all, just remind folks, our pilot schools, all our schools were, that were utilizing Richmond, Richmond math, which was based on Eureka, but we had done some internal attempts to, you know, show folks alignment that we had nearly every one of those schools had dramatic gains at the mid-year point. And the schools who did not utilize this did not have any math gains as of the mid-year point. And I think Mr. Camaras is going to skip over this, but Mr. Camaras, did you want to share anything since you've been teaching with this curricula over the last couple of months?
Thanks Tracy. Yes, I'm going to skip the mini lesson, but I am eager to do it because I do love teaching math and I definitely love teaching Eureka, which I've been doing with a loyal group of kids for the last couple of months. So I look forward to doing this tomorrow. So folks, I'm going to quickly go through these slides, don't peek. And then we'll have some fun doing the lesson next meeting.
Okay. And then, and the last portion of our presentation tonight is a summary of our implementation plan. As I shared again, we really want to use this moment to reset the paradigm for how we, how we lead and implement curricula change in this division. I've heard from so many folks over the past two years and recently about, one of the biggest concerns is just about how hard it is, how change is hard, but it's especially frustrating when it's not done well. And so, one, and then two, this, this is a different way of teaching and it's a different set of expectations in, you know, 2020. And for a lot of us as educators, we have to relearn this information and the content. And we want to make it, I've heard from teachers of fear, you know, concern about a fear of failure or a fear of getting, you know, and, you know, getting in trouble for not doing something well. And what we've been talking with our school leaders about is so much around like, we, let's use this as a moment to come together as professionals to learn and grow together. And especially if this, you know, pandemic has taught us anything, it certainly is to give us grace, is to give people grace. And give, we need to, this is an opportunity for us, I think, to reset the way we talk about teaching and learning and curricula with our teachers and make sure that teachers know this is about support and that we're going to learn alongside you and we're going to support you as you take this on.
Great. So I'm going to walk through our, the last part of this presentation, which is the curriculum implementation. So first, this is phase one, we're calling this, which begins this week with a curriculum previews. So we are launching on Wednesday, the initial engagement, which will have opportunities for principals, teacher leaders, teachers, community members to join. We are going to be adding additional dates, but that flyer and Google Meet hangout links have been sent out. And we can, will continue to share that on our website, which is rbschools.net backslash curriculum hyphen adoption. And so that will be begin phase one. In addition, we'll continue the engagement with community. We have PTA meetings scheduled, meeting with different organizations. So people have a true understanding of the curriculum and our plan for implementation. We will continue to have alignment meetings, so we're all understanding, you know, what part of the curriculum, how we're adopting the curriculum, et cetera. And one key element that I think I want to add or highlight here on phase one is the readiness survey. So what we want to do, and Dr. Eft alluded to this, the idea of we want to think about implementation in different ways and we've been part of, many of us have been part of change where change has not gone smoothly. And part of that was how that change management occurred. And so we wanted to have this readiness survey, which would ultimately help us develop plans and training that support like a universal way to use a new curriculum. And remembering that both of these curriculum are educative, meaning that they have elements on that that help us learn the content in addition to helping us learn how then to best deliver it to a wide variety of students and students' needs. So we are developed this readiness survey to really help support that and also to have developed site-specific needs for professional development. The readiness assessment is just really a start to implementing new curriculum with a different culture that's really based on support and like us learning altogether and, and not really out of fear, but or out of perfection. We want to, we're asking school leaders and teachers to reflect on their readiness, to gauge their readiness, so we can make school-based decisions about the implementation timeline, so we can provide school-based professional development and support plan, as well as thinking about what do we need as the division? So the feedback we'll get from this readiness survey is here to help us have a smooth change management through this work. These surveys will be due May 22nd and, you know, they are something that we see as confidential and a way These surveys will be due May 22nd and, you know, they are something that we see as confidential and a way for us to plan together with the principals and with the school. Phase two then goes, moves us into our professional development. And first, we, we have time really embedded. So our leaders can be lead learners. And lead learners with our teachers, with our coaches. We will have bi-weekly cluster meetings that have introduction to learning. And then we'll have lead sessions throughout the year. We'll also have weekly meetings for our implementation team. And we also, and it's on the slide, but we will purposely have strategic planning with our partners. Because we really believe in the idea of a partnership and working closely with both Great Minds and EL Education through Open Up Resources. That we want to make sure that they're hearing from us and we're hearing from them every step of the way. So again, we can learn and really grow together to support our students. The next, the next part of this talks about all the different learning opportunities that can begin as early as June. We really want to design a professional learning plan for our teachers that is flexible and allows for a variety of entry points. So of course, because of COVID, we are, all of our professional learning will be virtual this summer. And, but we'll have entry points. So teachers, like in June, will be able to feel like, I'm ready to learn right now. I'm all in. Let me, let me start my learning. Then there's going to be a number of virtual professional learning that teachers can access right away. But if a teacher's maybe has a situation or a leader has a situation where like, I don't have that ability. I am taking care of somebody in my household that is sick. I can't do that right now. They will be, have multiple opportunities to do that learning in July and then in August. And one of the key factors is by learning virtually, we're also building our skills to actually teach it virtually. We, in the partnership with these, both of these companies, we've had numerous conversations about the need to support the implementation of the curriculum virtually. How will we deliver the curriculum virtually? And they are all prepared to support us with that. And all of the materials will be digital as well as hard copies for our students and our teachers. And so we can kind of go through, look at all the specific, there's leader essentials, there are leader workshops, there's things specifically for our coaches. When we break down the literacy block at K two, there's learning specifically for the foundations of reading and the skills block. And then finally, we get to phase three. And phase three is that ongoing support. A lot of times we're like, okay, we have a change, we're going to do something new. We're going to learn all about it and then it's, good luck. I hope it goes well. And then there's no more support. That's not the intention of this implementation plan. We will have master classes that will begin virtually. And these classes will be deep dives into the curriculum. We will have coaches quarters where we'll have opportunities to have, continue to hone our coaching skills as well as coach, work on those skills related to the curriculum themselves. We'll have learning walks and coaching cycles as well as analysis. And then looking at how are things going, getting feedback from teachers on a regular basis, getting feedback from leaders. What's working, you know, how can we improve this? What, what have we learned? What, what are our students feeling and thinking, you know, especially both curriculum really focused on the ownership being on our students and having them lead their learning. So it'll be important part of this process also to hear from our students.
And then just quickly, I want to go really briefly to the last part here, which is this sort of, we've included the CAO work and, and also I've just been talking with, you know, principals and with teachers alike. And hearing that, you know, them asking, we want to, you know, we want more of your support. Want to hear more of your vision. And then we want, you know, you want, we want you to see if that's playing out and whether things are getting lost in translation. And so as I've shared with teachers and principals, it's really important for me that we create a culture of implementing with intentionality and integrity to the standards and to the quality. Not implementing with fidelity, just, you know, you're supposed to be on this page on this day. And I've asked principals, you know, that we need to really change the way we think about instructional support and supervision. And I know that's something that Harry and the chief schools office has been working on. And so it's clear that, you know, I really, our team needs to also support our school leaders and our teachers, our school leaders and helping teachers kind of create a different learning paradigm. But also I need to, I want to hear directly from teachers what they're hearing and whether sort of our intentions around grace and support and what's challenging. I want to make sure that like, I'm hearing that directly so that our teams can, I can make sure that we are being supportive.
And just as, if it's okay to add one final comment here. We have long heard that the biggest mistake associated with adoptions of new standards and new curriculum was a lack of support for teachers and coaches. So this implementation plan, which will continue to grow and support, will approach adoption and support in new ways that really leans on all of us to be learning together. And as was alluded, that we want to really implement with integrity and erase that term of implementing with fidelity out of our vocabulary. If we're truly committed to equity, we must embrace those things that make the biggest difference for our students who need the most support. And when all the students experience, when all students experience high quality teaching, they're more likely to learn. So when all of our classrooms are filled with these great materials and the great curriculum, students are more likely to learn and establishing those conditions for all learners will really help us close those key achievement gaps. We referred to the research earlier that there was extensive body of research that having an effective teacher, of course, dramatically, you know, increases student achievement. But now the research is really telling us that another growing body of evidence is that the power of the high quality curriculum is essential for that student growth as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Neighbors. And thank you, team. Really appreciate your time and, and thank you all for listening. I know that that was quite a lengthy presentation. Feels important to take the time. So with that, I will turn it over back to Mr. Camaras and see if we have any questions.
I just want to thank you, Tracy, Autumn, and the entire team. I just really appreciate the thoughtfulness and seriousness with which you've approached this work, which is very, very important. Grateful to you all and to all of the teachers, principals, families, everyone who have played a role in this process and who, of course, will continue to, as we seek feedback and continue to iterate and plan for professional development. Again, my commitment as superintendent, but also as a teacher is to make sure that we provide the support that our educators need so that they can successfully use these incredible resources. I'm excited as a teacher and as a superintendent, but most of all, as a dad, to have my two boys learning in Richmond Public Schools with these two curricula. Thank you all very much.
And I also thank you, Dr. App, Dr. Neighbors, and the whole team. It was long, but it was, it seems important, I think, for us to hear all this. And I have some requests for people who would like to speak or ask questions, starting with Ms. Gibson and then Mr. Barlow.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. That was a very long presentation. And I'd be frank, I, I wish that, I wish that we'd had it sooner. I mean, it's, it is today, we are, this evening, we are scheduled to vote and adopt a budget where this curriculum is, is a, is part of. And so, so having this presentation, the day that we are scheduled to vote, you know, it, it seems we are, you know, behind in terms of having that information shared. And, and two, I mean, it's now nine o'clock at night and, you know, I want to make sure that we have enough time to have a robust discussion both about this, about the curriculum and about the budget. So, so, you know, I'm sensitive to those things. You know, in the presentation, there are a couple of things I wanted to note. There was a conversation about some research made and, and I worry that overall there, there wasn't a true balance. And so the, the opportunity myth, which was, which was discussed as kind of highlighting the benefit of rigor and such. That, that report was, was, you know, rebutted by the national, the National Education Policy Center. I think it said Amanda Datnow of the University of California, San Diego, reviewed the opportunity myth. What students can show us about how school is letting them down and how to fix it. Datnow notes that the report conveys a great sense of urgency with descriptions of students spending significant time below grade level assignments, lacking strong instruction and high expectations and being disengaged in school. It paints a dramatic picture of American students being misled by false promises of opportunity when they could make significant learning gains if they experienced grade, late grade level content, strong instruction, deep engagement and high expectations. In this sense, the report addresses important issues, yet the reports claimed are not fully supported by evidence. And there are questions about how key constructs are measured and how data are analyzed. Professor Datnow found its conclusions reported in a way that seems to be aimed at creating a sense of crisis around the claims, rather than reporting nuanced, in-depth research findings based on rigorous methods. And, and I highlight that because I think that it is important to, when we're talking about numbers, we're talking about research, that, that we're providing that balance. Another thing that, that, that concerns me is, is when we're talking about equity. And I think, you know, as a city, you know, the word equity was used when we were talking about the property tax. And the reality of that, you know, we needed this property tax to bring equity to the city.
Gibson.
Let me, let me please, please finish.
Okay, let's try and move it along, not talk about property taxes, talk about curriculum.
Yes. Yes, I hoped we had moved it along. So back to my point about property taxes, which is brief. But that we use the term equity to talk about this property tax that we needed to have as a city. When in the reality was there are many communities in the city with rapid gentrification, where the property tax would not be a truly equitable thing. We talked about equity when we were talking about this Coliseum. And certainly that was not an equitable decision. And so I am at a point now that when I hear the word equity, I question that. And I think that everyone in the city should question that as well. In the budget, this is a line item that's $1.5 million. And, and anytime we're looking at a budget, this is about trade-offs. And so if we do approve a budget with this line item, we're also approving a budget that doesn't have seven positions for arts teachers and music teachers in high priority schools. That doesn't have seven positions we are cut from the budget for special education. We cut money from the budget for translation services. We cut money from the budget for, for technology, for English language learner students, English, language learner student surveys. Gosh, it's late. And so, and so we cannot use the term equity reasonably without recognizing that, that in truth, this is really about choice. This particular choice concerns me because there are some optics that are questionable. This was a, this is a company that's a $66 million company that is presented a nonprofit, but really receives very few grants. It is questionable to me that they relocated to Richmond and now are winning this contract. It's questionable to me that, that, that we are moving forward with this contract despite the fact that we are faced with a national pandemic. We have not discussed any of the possible scenarios and how we're going to be moving forward next year. And yet this, this curriculum is being presented as a have to have. And so, and so I have significant concerns about the possibility of adapting this right now. I'm thankful for the teachers and parents that have, have expressed concern for many, many weeks and.
We're not adopting it tonight.
We are adopting a budget this evening.
We will talk about the budget and we will talk about the curriculum part of that budget. Let's move on so we can get to the budget and that part.
Do not interrupt me this way.
Ms. Gibson.
My comments, but you cannot. Thank you.
Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you very much to the administration for this robust presentation and also to the members of the public for the incredible amount of feedback that we've received. I know that we're all receiving a lot of input from folks via phone and email and text message and, and things of that nature as well. Some of the consistent themes that have popped up that I've heard, in addition to some of the, I guess, more substantive issues, some of which Ms. Gibson was speaking to, relates to to the implementation process. And I know that there's, the presentation outlined that a little bit. But I'm curious in particular about knowing with more specificity about how we're going to be training teachers, how we're going to be preparing our students with the appropriate materials, how we are going to be placing our district in a, in a position where we can succeed if we need to rely on a, on a heavier e-learning or virtual learning approach in the coming school year. And another, another issue in particular that I'd like to get more feedback on is, is really related to the balance between how we have a, or how we put in place a curricular approach that allows for, for lack of a better term, a, a uniform approach throughout the district to ensure equity throughout the district without, without giving that feeling of scripted learning and really regimented lesson plans that, that our teachers don't feel that they have the ability to deviate from in immaterial ways. And, and I understand, you know, that that's been addressed in the presentation to some degree, but where I get concerned is sometimes, you know, to be frank, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. And if the administration, the administration may be very well intended with this approach, but I want to make sure that those intents, if, if we are going to move this way, trickle down to the teachers. So we don't have situations where building administrators may not be very clear on expectations or building administrators may be too clear with expectations and that our teachers don't feel that they have the ability to, to run their classrooms in a creative manner. So I've got concerns about that. And then to Ms. Gibson's point, and I know it's one that's been brought up before as well. I also have some concerns about, about the fact that this is in the budget. So I look forward to discussion about that when we get to the budget piece. And I really, I think it's important for us as a board to have a clear understanding of where we stand in the event that we don't approve one or both of these curricular approaches. So I think that's, I definitely want to hear more input about that and, and how we would move forward in that kind of situation because I don't, don't necessarily view this as a sure thing at this point. So, and then lastly, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the approach with the, with the state. It's encouraging to hear that we're, we're leading the way in a lot of ways with this approach, but I also want to make sure that, that what we're presenting to our teachers to teach our students does align with, with state standards effectively.
Okay. Ms. Page has questions, then Ms. Cosby, then Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first I would like to say thank you to my colleague for sharing the information. But I would like for it to be shared with other board members because if you have the information prior to the meeting, it would have been helpful if we had opportunity to review the information as well. But my question is, because we are talking about curriculum, don't want to get off topic, but I want to know, Dr. App, how many schools were palated for in this curriculum?
Yes, for math, it was 23 out of 26 elementary. And then our sixth grade math units that we provided to support. And then our sixth grade math units that we provided to support teachers in math was based on the, the open source version of Eureka. Again, I want to just remind folks, middle school math or ELA does not currently have and has not had for some time a current adoption of either.
So the board, when we receive the data, the information on the assessments, that was based on this program, correct?
Yes, for the ma, for the math curricula, yes.
And we saw gains in how many of those schools?
Well, in our pilot school, the pilot two years ago, we saw gains in all seven of those schools. And then in 19 out of those 23, we saw mid-year gains. There were some schools that didn't use it at all. Now, they did not have, they remained flat. So 19 out of 23 that were piloted, and then the schools that were not using it. And some schools started and then they pulled out mid-year and went back to their standard curriculum. So the schools that fully implemented, 19 out of 23.
Okay, and then my next question, so, I think I heard you all tonight, you spoke about research from peer-like districts that have used this curriculum. And they've seen progress with their students?
Yes, ma'am. We, Detroit and Memphis were the two shared. There, we have research, there's research from the New York City DOE on the EL curricula. And there, there's just numerous, very numerous sources, as I shared before. There's research that backs up the power of high-quality curricula from many different types of organizations, including some of the ones we shared tonight, but ones that go beyond. And I'd be happy to share any more of that as requested.
Okay, and then I want to ask you another question. So based on the data, um, you can fairly say that evidence-based, based on, um, you know, in the peer-like districts?
Yes, I, I would, I would definitely feel confident saying that. Again, ultimately, everything requires successful implementation. And of course, we want teachers to feel supported and comfortable. That, to me, is the first step of successful implementation. And we certainly would, I mean, I think, I won't go into it tonight just for the interest of time unless asked, but certainly would, eager to talk with teachers about how I view some of the challenges that Mr. Barlow referenced in terms of misunderstanding expectations around use. And just, there's no world in which, I think, using this in a scripted way is, is as bad as not using a curricula at all. We really want to help teachers focus on internalizing the information and getting themselves comfortable. But this is not meant to be scripted in any way.
Okay, and then my other question, this is my last question, Madam Chair. For right now, um, the exceptional education piece, how does this curriculum aligns with, um, their, um, you know?
Yes.
Lost some words right now, but how does it align with their, um, lessons?
Yes, so.
Paying God.
Yes, these were, these were reviewed for, for supports for teachers to provide accommodations or customizations for students with disabilities and students with language learning needs. Both curricula are based on something in the curriculum development space has, has thankfully taken hold, called the universal design for learning. And what that means is it provide, the lessons and the units provide multiple means of engagement. So the way they're written is there's lots of different ways that students are asked to do work. So that's not just a standard, it's not the same thing rinse and repeat every day. Second is multiple ways to represent what's being learned. And so utilizing visuals, utilizing symbols, a whole host of things to help students who have different ways of understanding information by representation, not just verbal, not just written, but visuals, et cetera. And then last are multiple means of expression of learning and how students learn. And so this includes using physical methods to learn, using demonstrations, using performance tasks to demonstrate learning and the like. And so both our staff who reviewed that for those lens felt very strongly about the supports provided.
So the professional development for our teachers will, will be intentional.
Ms. Page.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're going to move on to Ms. Cosby, then Mr. Young, and then Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the administration for the presentation. And while, yes, it was lengthy, I thought it was extremely informative. I too echo what Ms. Gibson said. I just wish I had hit this information earlier. And I'll be quite honest with you, I, up until perhaps a couple of weeks ago, I was probably against implementing anything new as we are in the midst of COVID-19. But I heard from many of the teachers in my district, as well as school leaders in the district. And I, you know, one email just stood out to me and, and the teacher said, "I would much rather have a high-quality reading, reading curriculum for my students during a challenging school year than stick with our current reading curriculum during a challenging year." So, you know, that just gave me a lot of pause and, 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 and then I wanted to explore further, what were the issues now versus what do we think we're going to gain with the new curricula? And, you know, as you spoke and with the presentation, I just started thinking, especially at the higher ed level, you know, we have, we have employers who are looking at our students at the college level and they're saying, no, it's not enough that you have a high GPA. Because the thought is, is that the, it's been watered down, but the content, the, the curricula, you know, has been watered down. So it's not enough to have just a high GPA. Now they want to see other things. And they want to see evidence that you have mastered the content. So that's why with a lot of companies now, they're asking people to do these, to, to, to do critical thinking projects as part of their interview process. And we, you have gamification now. So, so I, I get it, I get the why, of course. I think with what I've also heard, and this does create some hesitancy with me, you know, that whole professional development and the implementation. And how do we have effective professional development as we're going through or working our way through COVID-19? So I think that I would really like to get more information about that. I would really like to drill down and see what some of the responses are, that you talked about the survey that you sent out, the readiness. Is that what it was, the readiness survey? And to see how you all will address it, how the administration will address it. And also, I am glad to hear about the whole follow-through, you know? So it's not just, you know, the professional development for a couple of weeks, but it is going to be intentional throughout the implementation of the curricula. So, but for me, I do want to get a good sense of the professional development that you have in mind, informed by the, in the readiness survey.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's, for me, that's, that's critical. And, and, you know, people, and rightly so, teachers are nervous about it, you know? Is it going to be enough to have professional development virtually? And how do we, I would like to get more information, how do we implement this virtually? If we have to have some type of hybrid model as we go into the new school year? You know, so how does, what does it look like when it translates virtually? And so I, those, those are my, my main, my main concerns. Oh, and also, if you can answer this now, and maybe you don't have this information, but in terms of best practices. So when we talk about implementation of a new curriculum, in terms of best practices with professional development, what length of time do, is it, do you say is ideal for there to be significant, to get significant mastery for teachers? And not to, not to add additional angst?
Right.
The teachers to, you know, is it, is, you know, from June, your, your, your timeline hit like June through August? Is that going to be sufficient time? Is that something that is, that is, as I said, best practice? Do you see that throughout other school districts with rolling out a new program? Thank you. And if you can, do you, do you have that information, Dr. Epp? And if not, can you just get it to us?
I could definitely get it to you and get you some more details. I thank you for all of your comments and insights and happy to follow up with more of that information.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Young, then Ms. Burke, and now Ms. Dorr.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. In a perhaps feeble effort to introduce a little levity, I just wanted to acknowledge Tracy and Autumn and their team for bearing that awful terminology, implementing to fidelity. I recall perhaps with some fondness, a, a previous staff person saying that over and over with so much repetition on the 17th floor in City Hall that I, but I was going to have to just stand up and leave the, the meeting before I, I said something that was probably less than polite. But in all sincerity, just wanted to convey my gratitude to, to the team for the, for the thoughtfulness that they have invested. I'm not going to surprise anyone when I admittedly share my reservations relevant to any curriculum and it doesn't pertain to Eureka or any other particular curricula we've discussed this, this evening, just being the radical individual that I am and my prioritization of autonomy for teachers. It's, it's something that I'm always very mindful of. And, and, and I will share why I'm very grateful to this team for a lot of what they affirmed this evening and, and not, and, and not requiring that teachers adopt lesson plans that, that comport lock, stock, and barrel with any curricula. But I'll, I suspect to have more to say later in the conversation, but in the interest of expediency, I'll, I'll limit my remarks now, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Ms. Burke, and then Ms. Dorr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, thank you so very much, Dr. Epp, for your team's presentation, well done. I also read line by line beforehand the information that was on board docs, and I am elated. Number one, you are absolutely correct. For a middle school level, we have not had a program, as you stated, since about, about 17 years ago, sincerely. And we wonder what, what goes on in middle school? Why do our children, students do well in elementary? And we get to middle, you know, what happened? And you, we have great teachers, great support teams. So what happens between elementary to middle? Well, number one, first of all, leaving elementary and going to middle is a whole new structure, a different level of delivery. So the opportunity to have the program of which you addressed is well-received. And we heard that this evening with all the teachers and parents and administrators that wrote in, I mean, the number was double, double, and I have a lot more emails that weren't even read. So I'm, I'm just so happy to hear that folks know it's time for a change. Now, you're correct, seven, as I'm not, five to five years, every school system should adopt a new curriculum. We're in year seven, so that means that we, we've gotten comfortable. But our teachers are so on task and so focused, they deserve. They shouldn't have to spend all their time looking for resources. Teachers I've talked to, especially with the math program, they're pulling a little bit from here, a little bit from there, was this is that. So give them what they need. Now, so far, it's tying them down to the point where as you can't, I don't see this as being scripted as our, I think it was lip and cock that we had many years ago, but the children were passing. We're not expecting it to that extent. It may have been a program after that as well. But number one, I'm looking forward to the middle school support, because it will help with that transition from elementary to middle, because we already, we lose so many weeks of school. Students miss out really on half of the first semester. And I have complete, as a complete faith, as I stated earlier, that our teachers and administrations, administrators will collectively work with our parents. But they, we have to have ample time through professional development to also put in place a virtual support program. All that needs to be worked through. But that's what you're there for, Dr. Epp. That's not my responsibility. That's what you are, but why I want to make sure on our end as a board member that it is done. Because we can't do what we've always done and expect better and the best. For all those students that are making 500 or plus on the SOLs, they can make, many, many, many more students can do better with that. So we have a group of students that go on to middle school or elementary school, that come to school already on task. And we have other students who are always catching up. So just think to have that same program in place from elementary school to middle school, the consistency there, the routine that's there. Also, I'm very pleased in what I read regarding the diversity piece. Know the current program that we have in place is not diverse. It's the same program that was in place when I was working every day in the school system. But teachers on their own would go out and get the necessary books or media specialists as well, or parents would bring in support materials. So let's, let's, I don't want to lose this opportunity. And this, with me, is children first. And every teacher that sincerely has that, and hears it her mind, will go the length of the way and then some to make sure that every child has the opportunity to do well. Because see, when our children fail, that falls back on us. I'm not satisfied with the minimum. Why not reach the max? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke, Ms. Dorr, and then Dr. Sapini.
Hi, thanks. That, you know, echo all of the feedback. Appreciate lots of good information here. I have a, two requests for follow-up information and then a question. In regards to request for follow-up information, I agree with Ms. Cosby. I think understanding, and you all touched upon it tonight, but understanding, you know, we know that the rollout of the pilot this year was rocky. And so understanding what lessons we learned from that and, you know, making sure that we have, you know, I liked the beginnings of the plan, but would love a little bit more information on the professional development side. I'd also be interested to just see the list of community members that participated in those committees. In regards to my question, I have a question about the bu, the budget. I wanted to know, I wanted to confirm, one, that the budget as proposed, that we'll be reviewing shortly, proposes using $2020 budget dollars for a majority of the curriculum. And so our approval on that transfer would be a fun transfer, not related to this specific budget approval, just a procedural question. And my second question related to the budget is, are there any unforeseen costs to maintaining the status quo? So do we spend money currently because we don't have a comprehensive curriculum? And are there any potential savings there when we do implement, you know, when and if we do implement a curriculum?
Okay. Ms. O'Leary, would you like me to answer those now or later?
Yes, Dr. Epp, yes.
Okay.
Well.
Yeah. Well, one, just, I think, just briefly on the rollout of the pilot. One of the, one of the tricky things was we had not, because we had not, it was an expanded pilot, but we did not get approval via DOE and procurement around procuring great minds because we had not gone through the RFP process. And this was an open ed resource. So we were doing all that work in-house, all the printing, all the alignment, all of that stuff. And it was, it was very, we were very limited in the amount of professional development we could contract. So I do think by having. So I do think by having, having our, having this approval and having a contract enables us to implement this the way we implemented the first pilot when we were able to contract with Great Minds to do a bulk of the presentation as well as the printing of the materials. And that's really what you're paying for when you're adopting an OER. You're not, you're not paying the same cost per unit as a traditional publisher. You're really paying the printing and shipping costs because everything else is free available download. And you're paid for professional development. And then, so we can talk more about lessons learned and we'll be talking with our teachers over the next couple of weeks on that. And we can get more information on PD. We, it'll definitely be based on the feedback we get from the readiness survey from teachers and principals and school leaders. In terms of unforeseen costs, I don't, I mean, there's always the annual like consumables, like workbooks, things like that. So we would purchase that for our current ELA work. That would be the old version of Benchmark. I don't think we would invest more in, I guess I'd want to learn more from teachers about whether that would, they would also want to invest more in professional development there. Just given some challenges that, again, I don't, you know, it's more of, and that's varied across the divisions. I'd want to, I'd want to think more about that. But I don't think we see cost savings. I think with, the headline for me is by not adopting math, we actually changed course of where all of our, basically almost all of our elementary schools were going and where our sixth grade was going. So it's, it's actually more of a change to not adopt. Now, I could not have predicted that going into this process because I did not know, you know, the evaluation committee made that, just made that recommendation. For ELA, I think the cost is just more in terms of quality of instruction.
Okay. Thank you. And Dr. Sapini?
Yeah, thank you. I'm not going to beat a dead horse considering, you know, I do agree with some of my other colleagues who had already mentioned importance and implementation and planning as it relates to professional development. And when it comes to the professional development, as we know, a lot of times that's one of the key things that lots of teachers have issues with as far as who's doing it and, and the, the overall, really how it's done. Because you hear complaints that it's a waste and so on and so forth. So obviously, with something as important as this, we would expect and hope that it will be implemented and planned properly. And as far as planning, which goes along with quite a few other things that we haven't really heard as much, what is the plan for various things? And I think that's important. But I would, just to kind of skip through, I would like to see the data. You mentioned, Dr. Epp, as it relates to surveys that was done with teachers. I would like to see the data for that as well as the data for the success rate of the schools that were, it was piloted in.
We can get that.
Okay. Is that it, Dr. Sapini?
Let's, I'm not going to repeat what everyone else already said.
Okay. Well, Ms. Page would like to have a question and then Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just want to reiterate also about the implementation plan update. If the board, if we could receive, say, maybe a monthly update, you know, how things are rolling out, you know, as it relates to the professional development, virtual learning, when things return back to, if we can call it such, such a thing as normal, normacy, but, um, yeah. Like that information update from the administration of how everything is rolling out. And then I failed to mention that this was a solid presentation. And thank you, Dr. Epp, and your team for providing this information. And it is, so this curriculum is across the district, not one school doing their thing and another school doing their thing. So this would really create one RPS.
Yes, I will quickly say, and I don't know if this came through in the presentation as clearly, with ELA in particular, given that it doesn't have the same, we're not still continuing the same course with math. We're looking at the readiness assessment and, you know, principals and teachers considering whether they adopted this fall or next fall. So we're open to having a conversation about a, you know, two-year window that gives schools flexibility to start now or start later.
Okay. Okay, so all of that will be helpful as a part of the implementation.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Cosby?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Epp. That caveat is very interesting to note that there would be some flexibility for stu-, for, for schools in terms of implementation. But I did have a question. So in terms of cost, do you think that there would be some cost savings realized with the adoption of the curricula because a lot of the professional development will probably be done virtually? Or has that been considered in the cost already? I mean, things change from when this process first started. So is there potential for some cost savings? You know, we're doing things virtually initially.
I'll have to get back to you on that. I know that we're, you know, we're doing the final numbers on the contract in terms of cost for virtual versus in-person. So let me circle back to you on that. I think it'll be a marginal savings, probably not significant because we'd want to use this time to do more trainings and provide more flexibility. We want to provide more time slots so the people had flexibility. But let me get back to you on that with more details on, at the, when we finalize the budget.
Okay.
All right. All right. Then, oh, Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it does seem to me like there are a lot of follow-up, follow-up items, data to be shared, probably additional questions to be asked. And I know that from moving forward with this, that we'd want an answer sooner rather than later. So I'm curious to know whether this may warrant a follow-up meeting for board members who may be interested, maybe an hour or two, to discuss things further and get some of these questions answered. I don't want to be in a situation where we, I don't want to be in a situation where we push, push a decision at the next meeting, given the timeframes.
We will explore that. Okay. All right. All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Epp. Thank you, team.
Thank you.
And we will, we will move on now then to our next item. Very important, one of our most important jobs. And that is 5.01 received for action in fiscal year '21 and fiscal, and budget and the CIP budget for fiscal year '21 through '25. Is that correct, Mr. Camera?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Owen, and thank you to all the school board members. I appreciate everyone's diligence in, in continuing to remain fully invested in the discussion at 9:40. So thank you so much for that. And thank you for all the feedback throughout the budget process. I think we have arrived at a draft that is, I think something that we can really be proud of collectively and really provides a lot of great things for our teachers, our students, all staff. So with that, I'm going to share my screen and just walk you through a little bit of information and then glad to answer any questions that folks have. So with that, let me get this set up. Okay. So just a reminder, a quick reminder, more for the, the public than the board. We passed a budget a couple of months ago, approved is the technical word, that called for about $44 million in new spending as we were expecting a whole lot of new revenue. Because of the virus, though, our revenue projections are down, though they are still up, which is something we should feel very blessed for given that many school divisions around the country actually are seeing actual cuts below their current year rates. So rather than $44 million in new spending, it looks like we're going to have about $20 million in new revenue. And so we had to make up the difference between that $44 million and the $20 million. And so I appreciate, again, the work of the board over the last several weeks to help us close that gap. Despite the fact that we had to come up with a number of reductions in our new spending, there's a lot in here to be very excited about and very proud of. And so here, this is just a quick list of highlights, a 2% raise for teachers and all staff. By comparison, our neighbors in the counties are doing 0%. So definitely adds to our competitive advantage in the region and takes us a small step forward in recognizing our teachers and staff for the extraordinary work that they do. Clearly, 2% is not enough, 4% wouldn't be enough. But I'm grateful that we're able to take this step towards our ultimate goal of having our teachers be the highest paid in the nation. We also have a 1.17% step increase for the teachers, principals, and nurses, since those are the salary skills that we decompress. Again, I've said this before, but I want to just say it again. The step is in addition to the raise. I know we had, I think, one or two public comments tonight which suggested there might still be some confusion about that. Again, to clarify, it's a 2% raise and a 1.17% step increase. We also have new decompressed schedules for custodians, bus operators, instructional assistants, and APs. That is extremely exciting, particularly the first three groups who are truly incredibly dedicated individuals who are not getting paid all that much right now and many of whom are instrumental to our work to provide food and technology and so many other supports during the closure. 15 new teachers to help us reduce class sizes in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade, which is very exciting to be able to do particularly right now as we think about reopening and wanting to make sure that we have class sizes that will allow our teachers to support all of their students. 10 new ESL teachers, which is absolutely important given our growing EL population in Richmond. By the way, I'll just note that will take us to about, I believe, 40 ESL positions that this board has added over the last two or three years. And I think that's something this board can be incredibly proud of. In addition, 10 new preschool teachers to expand our VPI enrollment by over 250 students. We know there is no greater investment than making sure our three-year-olds and four-year-olds get into quality preschool. So we're incredibly excited to be able to do that as well. Nine new social workers. These are critical folks on our school teams, even more so given the coronavirus. So really thrilled that we'll be able to add those. Eight new middle school teachers to ensure equity of offerings at our middle school level. Five new nurses, again, so, so critical during this time, which is going to get us ever closer to having a full-time nurse in every one of our buildings. And this is on top of the rather significant pay increase from last year, which has enabled us to attract a lot more nurses to come to RPS, giving us the lowest nurse vacancy rate that we've had in years. Five new reading specialists, which again will be critically important when we reopen. The new behavior, elementary behavior intervention program, which the board has voiced incredible support for, and we are excited to get to work on that. As well as a new program to support recent immigrants, which our English language team has been hard at work on and we are excited to tackle, given how critical it is that we do things differently and better for those young people. New STEM academies at MLK and Henderson, which are going to be really exciting and so much fun for our kids. I can't wait to get those started. And of course, new support to help us increase attendance, which is one of the most important levers for school. So a lot to be really proud of and to really celebrate in the budget as it currently stands. And again, I just want to thank the board, thank the public for all the feedback to help us get to this point. A few additional notes in response to some board questions that arose. I know there were a number of questions about the ASPIRE program, just briefly, for the board, but also for the public. This is a program which helps overage, undercredited students graduate. So these are kids who, you know, they should be 10th graders, but, I'm sorry, they should be getting ready to graduate, but they have the credits of a 10th grader, things of that nature. This program currently has 11 FTEs. And per the board's request, we've looked at it really closely and we think we can reduce the program by three FTEs by really leaning on RTC for assistance with their administrative team. We don't want to eliminate, or rather, get rid of roles that, that people are currently in. And since all the roles are currently filled, what we are proposing is to cut three of the roles, but then place three of those individuals into vacancies elsewhere. So nobody would actually lose a job, but it would produce a savings of $300,000. Our proposal for what to do with that $300,000 is in that next bullet. Board member Dorr suggested at our last budget meeting to use $50,000 to subsidize aftercare at the Rizone schools to maintain Brothers United and Girls for a Change and for customer service training. So we have put that into the latest version of the budget. And then with the remaining $250,000, we have proposed restoring three of the new special education FTEs in the prior version that had gone to zero. But now we think we'll be able to restore three of those. So that is on ASPIRE. And then moving to the central office vacancies, in our last report, we had 16. We're now down to 14, two were filled. Again, we're recommending cutting three of the remaining 14. They're listed there, the coordinator of ECE instruction, coordinator of exceptional instruction, and the director of assessment and research. And those savings are already included in the budget. A word about the stimulus, as I shared last time when we met, the funds are to be shared between public and private school students. This is according to the United States Department of Education. I will tell you that this is being challenged and I am advocating, along with the Council of Great City Schools, to challenge this to make sure that all the money goes to public school students or to ensure that additional funds are allocated. But being as that is the current guidance, I think we can assume that some of that $13 million is not going to come to RPS. I am making a rough estimate of about $10 million that we would still receive, though it could of course be a little bit more than that or a little bit less than that. And so we've updated the, the draft stimulus budget to be based on the figure of $10 million. As you can see, there are listed $3 million for technology, software, and training for students and teachers to support long-term online instruction, which potentially could start this summer. That would be a more robust version of online instruction than what we currently have. And we talked last time about making sure all of our educators have devices, potentially internet access as well. So we wanted to reserve a significant amount of money for that. Social emotional reentry supports. We actually have bumped that up since the last version of this budget to $2 million. A combination likely of contracts with partners that we already work with to provide those supports, along with other supports that we'd like to put in place going into along with other supports that we'd like to put in place going into next school year. We are paying overtime to our nutrition workers, custodians, et cetera, folks who are helping us with the food distribution, technology distribution, and so on. This will continue through the summer, and so we believe reserving 1.5 million for that will be necessary. As we've talked about, we want to do a deep cleaning of all of our schools before we reopen and purchase new equipment and ample supplies to make sure that our schools are able to maintain the cleanliness and safety of our schools once we reopen. So altogether there, about $2 million. There were a couple of items related to nursing that we cut from the FY21 budget, but that we are reserving funds for in the stimulus, so that was a sub-nurse budget and nursing supplies and equipment at 285K. And then the remainder, about 1.2 million as an emergency reserve for other costs that will inevitably come up, that we wanted to make sure that we had. Of course, this is not, by any means, the final word on the stimulus. We're still waiting to hear exactly how much we will be receiving from the CARES Act, and then we need to actually submit an application to the VDUE, so it is not just a matter of saying yes and receiving the funds. The next step will be to submit that application, and as we put that together, of course, we will share that with the board. The next set of slides is the document you should be familiar with. I've stripped out the the highlights just to give you the the clear picture. Red, as always, just indicates things that changed from our approved budget from several months ago. But everything that we've discussed is now enshrined here, and this takes us to a balance where just a few thousand below what we need to be to make sure that we are in balance. And then last, I just wanted to share the FY21 CIP budget. It's a little bit over $4 million, so much smaller than it was or than it will be for this current year. Here are the set of projects after discussing with the facilities team that they would most prioritize. I do want to note that first item is critical, the wireless infrastructure. When we do return, we are going to have roughly twice as number, twice as many, rather, computers in our schools, and we want to make sure that we have very robust internet access and the right wireless infrastructure to support that. So that is why that is a significant expense. That takes us to the conclusion of the presentation, and glad to answer any questions that folks have.
Before we do questions, before we have a discussion, is there a motion to adopt? And we can't adopt the stimulus budget. That should not be part of this vote. So do you, we have the CIP budget and the fiscal year 21 budget. Is that correct? Mr. Cameron?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so I see Mr. Barlow. Are you making?
So I'd like to to move that we approve the budget with with an amendment in light, in particular, of the curriculum, outstanding curricula question, so that in the event that the school board does not approve of the curricula proposed by the RPS administration at our June 1, 2020 meeting, any funds allocated towards implementation of the curricula will be allocated toward the COVID-19 response efforts or to other priorities as designated by the RPS administration and board.
Second.
Okay, so it has been seconded by, it has been moved by Mr. Barlow. Now, Ms. Wilson, are you getting this?
I did not get his amendment.
Okay, the amendment is that should the school board not approve the curricula, any funds in the budget, and you help me with this, Mr. Barlow, if I've got it wrong, so that were intended to be used for the curricula would be reallocated by the board. Is that correct, Mr. Barlow?
Yeah, so I did say will be allocated toward COVID, the COVID-19 response efforts or to other priorities as designated by the board and administration, so I sent that along to Mrs. Wilson or to the group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you. He's, he put it in the in the group chat. Do you see it there?
I need to find it. Thank you.
Okay, and then Ms. Door seconded. Okay, so now we will. So I'm going to need help with this. Mr. Young also has an amendment. Now, do we vote? Mr. Young, what is your amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to propose that, well, first, let me begin by sharing just real briefly that I said last time, we're upset probably a million times, everybody's tired of me. But for me, my three priorities are pay or compensation as relates to this budget. My three priorities are pay or compensation for our teachers, two, increasing flexibility in our scheduling due to the uncertainty relevant to COVID, and then three, adding or adding instructional time, augmenting the calendar. And so, Madam Chair, I would propose that we strike the central office vacancies. So in other words, the superintendent and his budget that has now been motioned and seconded, it strikes three of the fourteen. I would propose that we would strike ten, so I would not strike the exceptional education coordinator, but aside from from that position, the the balance, so the ten vacant positions, Madam Chair. And and then additionally, in the same amendment, I would propose that in lieu of reducing ASPIRE expenditures by $300,000, that we would, we would phase it out in, perhaps phase the right terminology, that instead we would reduce all spending to to zero dollars for for the following fiscal year for the ASPIRE program.
Okay, can you write that in the chat, please? Can you write your amendment?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I want to remind everybody that if we eliminate the ASPIRE program, those ten, or I'm not sure how many teachers are still there, those teachers would lose their positions. They would, in effect, be fired. Mr. Cameras? Mr. Cameras, can you minimize your screen for a minute so I can see people better?
And Madam Chair, may I briefly, I'm sorry. The second part, second part of that, and I will submit this per your request, is that we would then, those dollars that would be saved, we would put into the emergency COVID fund to supplement what the superintendent has has proposed as relates to this federal relief dollars. In other words, that anticipated approximately $1.2 million. Essentially, we would triple that fund to.
Okay, I really need you to write it because you need a second, okay? And so it would help people who might, who might want to second your proposal to amend it. They need to see what it is before they can second, so. So.
Here it comes.
And so. I realize, Ms. Burke, you have a question, but let's try and deal with this amendment first. And then we'll have our discussion. Mr. Young?
Sorry, I'm trying to do it on a little device here. It's coming. Here it comes. Okay, there we go. Did it come through?
I propose to cut the central office vacancies to remove ten positions, along with cutting ASPIRE in full, to use all dollars for the COVID contingency fund. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second? I'm looking, I'm listening. Okay, I believe this motion fails for lack, I'm sorry?
Second.
Okay, so Ms. Cosby has seconded the amendment. So now we will have a discussion on the amendment. Now, Ms. Burke and Dr. Sapini had questions. I don't know if you had questions about the original budget or questions about this amendment. Ms. Burke, did you want to speak now? Or you want to wait till we're through with this amendment?
I'll wait.
Okay, Dr. Sapini, do you have a question about this amendment, or do you want to wait until we get back to the full budget discussion?
Well, first I had a question about the the original document there.
Okay, well, hang on. Let's get, let's get through the amendment. So is there any discussion about Mr. Young's amendment? I'm looking, I'm looking.
No, it is not a question about his amendment. I, you know, thank you for the paragraph from administration, but I know I wanted to get some more information about ASPIRE. So during one of our last meetings, we were told there were forty-one participants, thirty-seven attended the AM session, nine attended the PM session, and twelve seniors were slated to graduate. To graduate. Okay, so, but we don't know. You know, we've heard a lot of comments in support of ASPIRE. However, we have yet to receive data, which we have asked for, and, you know, so what's the attendance like? Is it really being, for the amount of money, is it really being utilized? Is it, is it cost-effective? If you're saying all the students are attending regularly, if it's eighty percent attendance both for the AM and the PM, that's wonderful, or ninety percent attendance. If it's only twenty percent attendance, is it truly an effective program? Of the twelve, so twelve seniors are slated to graduate. How big was the class? I mean, of the forty-one participants, how many are considered seniors? How many considered juniors? I mean, you know, so this type of breakdown, I really want to to see. And it's a bit frustrating because we've asked for the information. It's frustrating to me. I can't speak for anybody else. But but that's the type of breakdown to help us make informed decisions.
Okay, Ms. Gibson, was your question about the amendment or about the proposed budget?
It's about the amendment.
Okay, then you're next.
I, thank you, Madam Chair. I I share the the thoughts that Ms. Cosby brought up as as it relates to ASPIRE. I support the amendment in terms of reallocating the the central office positions otherwise. And I have similar question too, as it relates to, you know, having more information on on transportation, so. So if we've now got a kind of parking lot list of of items that need further discussion, which would include the, you know, the the curriculum, which would include the ASPIRE program, and I would also suggest that include transportation. My question is, you know, how can we facilitate next steps in light of those those remaining questions?
Okay, Mr. Young, you wanted to comment on your amendment?
Just just very briefly, I just wanted to share with with my colleagues and with our team that I solicited feedback from anonymous online feedback from my neighbors and requested that they prioritize different items in our in our budget, and not surprisingly, of of all the the different priorities that that I included, that we included, fifty percent of respondents identified COVID-19 mitigation strategies among their 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 top three priorities, and I don't think that should surprise anybody. So I just want to acknowledge and compliment the superintendent for including in his proposal, and Madam Chair, I recognize, to your point, we're not voting on his proposal this evening relative to the the federal monies. But I just wanted to acknowledge and compliment the inclusion of that fund. I think the superintendent has described it as an emergency fund. It's semantics, emergency, COVID, emergency. But my point or intent of this amendment is to augment that fund, to put more dollars into that into that account, just because we we just don't know. And and it seems to me that the value of that approach is that those dollars are there for us to use in a myriad of ways and absent any real kind of significant constraints. So that that would be my my plea or request to my colleagues for their consideration, that this is this is really, for me, it's an opportunity to supplement what the superintendent has proposed with even additional dollars. And to be blunt, on the subject of ASPIRE, I think we all, and some folks have said that, said this this evening, including some some public comments, we all recognize the value in the most important goals relevant to that program. But it does seem to me that as we're standing up our virtual programming to include some of what we'll presumably discuss even later this evening, that perhaps we can use some of these dollars that we're putting into the COVID emergency fund for for that purpose. So so that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, all right, then, Mr. Barlow, and then Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to put this nicely. I really appreciate Mr. Young's efforts to to make sure that we are bolstering that contingency fund, because I think this is going to be, you know, I'd love to have a budget that that I feel like we would be implementing in its exact form next year, but as has been noted throughout this process, there are a lot of unknowns. There are some significant unknowns, including whether council may be making adjustments in the in the coming year. So I do think that we have to be very careful and mindful of getting updates from the administration as we move into the summer and the beginning of the next year, so we can make any necessary budget transfers and updates as we go forward. But I will say I am more than happy to engage in discussion about how to move forward with the ASPIRE program, whether it's being run effectively, et cetera. But at this point, what I'm really concerned about is making a significant cut that will impact the lives and and ability to advance of students who need additional support without having a backup program in place. I'm also concerned about just making the cuts to some of these central office positions without some further discussion about about those on a more individualized basis, although I know we at least had some more discussion about that in our past meetings, but I would not be in a position to feel comfortable with cutting the ASPIRE program right now and and cutting teacher jobs without much further discussion, and certainly not at the meeting in which we intend to approve this budget without having had more robust discussion about it in the past and without the opportunity to communicate with those who will be impacted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Ms. Page?
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, I have a question for the superintendent regarding Aspire. I'm not, I want to know if this program is cut, which I hope that we don't, because is there a plan for the students that are currently participating in the Aspire program?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, because I've had, I have concerns about the program, but I'm just not um, in support of pulling the rug under some most vulnerable students, and we don't have a plan.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Page. Seeing no other comments, Ms. Wilson, can we call the question on the amendment?
Okay, so the amendment is to cut the Central Office vacancies to remove 10 positions along with cutting Aspire in full to use all dollars for the COVID contingency fund. The motion was made by Mr. Young. It was seconded by Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Can you hear me?
No, I didn't. And this vote again is just on the amendment.
Can I amend the amendment?
Not at this time, no.
Um, no.
Okay.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
No.
Mrs. Page?
No.
Mr. Barlow?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mrs. Burke?
No.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Motion fails, two seven.
Okay. Then let us go back to our questions about the original budget proposal. Ms. Burke, then Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Okay, let's start with Ms. Burke.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What my question is, I wrote it down, going back to what Mr. Barlow stated earlier. Um, they found a paper I wrote it on. Okay, the last part of his proposal listed that, okay, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I wrote it down, but I see it's moved up on the screen, forgive me. Okay, that the administration would make the decision in the event that the new curriculum is not adopted, which would be unfortunate. But the administration would make the decision then, excuse me, would recommend what those dollars could be used for.
Right.
Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so what my question is, so if the administration's recommendation would be to continue with a new curriculum, that would be acceptable?
No, because the board still has to approve it.
Right.
So that's, that's, exactly. So let's say the board does not approve it. And they come up with a different means of professional development, let me put it that way. So it still could be used for professional development or curriculum, but not as what the Eureka or the other program. If it's instead professional development for students trauma-informed, student trauma programs, or what, what's the other priorities? What's the designated Richmond Public Schools Administration? What's, I like to hear what the other priorities would be.
So, Madam Chair, I'm happy to.
All right, Mr. Barlow.
I'm here.
And then Dr. Sapini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, the, the, this, this is not an attempt to give authority to the administration that they, that they don't already have. So the intent here is to, to make sure that, that approval be by the, by the board. I assume a recommendation from the administration would precede that. And I didn't include any language here that would limit our ability to use it for other professional development or other types of things, although I did note the COVID-19 response effort, given the times that we're in and given that, that I imagine that will be a priority for us in the coming months.
Okay, Dr. Sapini?
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, you forgot about me. Um, just a couple of things. One, on that, the first page, the highlights of the proposal.
Okay, you can go back to your page view, Mr. Cameras.
I could, I could read this, no problem.
Oh, okay.
The second line about the one point, the step increase. It states for, for teachers, principals, and nurses, but does that include or doesn't include assistant principals?
Well, the assistant principals haven't been decompressed yet. This budget would put that into place next fiscal year. So the following fiscal year, they would then get a step increase.
Okay. And with, with so much having to be cut right now because of this whole pandemic and everything else, we've had to do so many changes with the budget in at least a couple of areas. It stated that we would, you look at, we would see grant funding. I mean, again, as I mentioned earlier, as far as planning and implementation, like what is the plan if we don't get any grant funding? And what is the plan for transportation? What's the plan for, you know, considering we're having less buses, less drivers? You know, having to cut back on art, music, and athletic equipment, and things of that nature. What is the plan to move forward with or without these things? We have special ed positions that are proposed to be cut, restorative justice, leaders, high priority schools. Really, I'm looking for the plan, you know, I want to hear if this happens, then that if, you know, we have a certain amount, then we'll be able to do this or that. What is, what is our plan? To be able to move forward?
Mr. Cameras?
Well, you know, many of the things that we're cutting, we're not going to be able to move forward with. We'll have to press pause on. Unfortunately, you know, I think that is, that is the reality of the current situation that we're in. Of course, we're going to do everything we can to use our resources as best as we can to ensure that we are not only maintaining the level of service we're providing students, but enhancing it in many places. I do want to remind the board that, for example, I think you raised special education, which is an excellent point. We are not cutting special education from its current levels. In fact, we're going to add three positions for next year. All that we're doing is reducing the amount that we're adding. So again, I do want to make sure the public in particular understands and hears this very clearly. There are no cuts other than the three to aspire that we are proposing to the current level of service being provided. This entire budget for the last several weeks has been about reducing the amount of new expenditures that we will have next year. So I do actually think we are quite blessed, particularly relative to other school divisions, to be in a position to still add for next year. And if you look at just the list of highlights, it's actually still a rather significant add. And, and so I did want to just make sure to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, okay, I think then I see no further discussion, so let's call the question.
Wait, wait a minute. I'm, I'm sorry. I thought there was a question from Dawn, but I wanted to ask about that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I wanted to ask about amending or doing a version of Mr. Young's amendment.
So you would like to propose an amendment to the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Amendment would be to include Mr. Barlow's amendment, as well as to cut, as opposed to, to cut 10 of the 16 Central Office vacant positions.
So you're proposing to amend the budget to cut the 10 unfilled?
10 of the 16 Central Office vacant positions.
Okay. Madam? There, Mr. Cameras, there are now 11, right? Vacant positions in Central Office?
Once there are 14, we have proposed cutting three.
Right.
Yes, there are.
So that would leave 11.
Let's, let's go, just so I can have some clarity here. All right. So this, I'm looking back at what we had maybe two meetings ago. Instructional specialist, school counselor, instructional specialist, PD academic office, coordinator, ECE instruction, coordinator, exceptional education, director, academic operations, instructional assessment analyst, instructional assessment analyst, director, I guess it's assessment literacy research, human resources specialist, senior human resources specialist, senior human resources specialist, admin office, associate supervisor, electrical, HVAC manager, technology, fiscal associate. So that's 16. Now, what, what have I missed?
Since that time, two of those positions have been filled. So we're down.
What two have been filled?
I would ask Ms. Hudasko to chime in on that information.
Or, good evening. The two positions that were filled were the instructional specialist for elementary counseling and one of the talent office positions. You'll see both of those on your personnel actions.
So that takes us to 14 vacancies, and we have proposed cutting three of those 14.
So that leaves you with 11. So, Ms. Cosby, you probably need to type this in here so we can see it. You're, you're proposing to cut the Central Office vacancies to remove 10 positions. Additional positions. Is that, is that your intent?
Yes, well, now I'm confused, because if we have these two that are, been filled while we've had this budget discussion, I'm coming back to that.
Okay, so are you proposing an amendment to cut 10 positions? Okay, which, from Central Office? Is that your?
It's going to have to be less than that. Let me count this, hold on. All right, so what I'm saying is, as opposed to just cutting the three suggested positions, I'm saying to cut, since two of them, we're going to look at in this human resources action, I'm suggesting cutting eight.
Eight additional. I'm typing it for you.
No, so he's already proposed three, so it'd be five additional, okay?
Okay.
Total eight.
A second.
Hang on. All right, so Ms. Cosby proposes an amendment to cut five additional Central Office positions. Is that? And, but let me, let me make sure, please. Ms. Cosby, do I have that correct? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Young has seconded. Okay, Ms. Page got kicked out. So she's calling back in.
And I currently have Ms. Page on speaker.
It's telling me, waiting on the host to let me back in.
It's waiting on the host to let her back in.
Mr. Stanley? All right, so is there any discussion on the amendment to cut five additional Central Office positions? I do not see discussion, so we will call the question. And this is just on the amendment?
Okay, um, let me make sure I have it right, because I was trying to get Ms. Page as well. So the amendment was made by Ms. Cosby to cut five additional Central Office positions, positions, excuse me, and it was seconded by Mr. Young?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Mrs. Door?
No.
Mr. Barlow?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
No.
Mrs. Burke?
No.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Motion fails. Four five.
All right, then we, now we will call the question on the budget as amended by Mr. Barlow.
Okay, and that was to approve the FY21 and FY2125 CIP budgets with the amendment that in the event the school board does not approve of the curriculum proposed by the RPS administration in our June 1st, 2020 meeting, any funds allocated towards implementation of the curriculum will be allocated toward COVID-19 response efforts or to other priorities as designated by the RPS administration and board that was seconded by Mrs. Door.
Okay, yes, but Ms. Gibson would like to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just, I just wanted to note that I am, I don't plan on voting in support of the budget. I am thankful for the amendment, as I do believe it's important to give the curriculum discussion its due diligence. My concern with the budget as it stands now is, is really just the, the need for, the need for those scenarios. I think this district, unfortunately, we're a bit behind. And I'm hearing from other districts that are starting to think about what's going to happen in the fall. And, and those decisions do have budget implications, and I am concerned that, that we haven't done that initial thinking so that we are prepared. Just today, Governor Northam did say that, that school openings will likely vary district to district, and this district needs to, to be prepared on, on what might be to come. I also think it's critical, as I mentioned a bit earlier, that we have more information about transportation. Transportation was a line item that, that we saw needed to be, you know, exceeded quite a bit. There are lots of questions on the table in terms of, of the impact of rezoning on transportation. In addition, you know, the, the In addition, you know, the budget reflects some cost savings from a plan that, that we haven't seen, that the public hasn't seen, and I worry that when we put votes on the table that are budget votes without seeing the additional decisions that are behind it. So, so I just wanted to share my rationale for my vote this evening, and, but I am thankful that we are able to continue the discussion about the curriculum.
Okay, thank you. Now, Mr. Barlow, and then Mr. Young. Guys, it's late, okay?
Yes, yes ma'am, it is. And, and thank you for allowing the opportunity to speak on this, at this point, given the late hour. But I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts about this moving forward, and my feeling about the process as it's gone to date. I will say that I was much more optimistic about this budget process when we started this process than, and as we were in the earlier stages of this process than I've been at virtually any point in a, in a budget process since I've been on the board. In the past, there have been tough decisions, there have been some, whatever you to be, some political games that were going on, there were all kinds of issues that, that were sort of man-made that made the budget process pretty challenging. And this year, I was optimistic because it seemed like we were really moving forward with an approach that highlighted a lot of needs that our schools and our students have, and our teachers have. I was really optimistic about the idea of giving a 4% raise to our teachers and staff. I was very optimistic about hiring a bunch of additional teachers and other positions to support our students. And I am glad that, you know, to a large degree, many of those things are still in the budget, but, but it does feel frustrating that it seemed like we were just about on our feet, and then we ran into an unprecedented health crisis here. So that's, that's how I'm feeling about things generally, but I think it's also, and this is to Ms. Gibson's point, and I know it's something that's been on the minds of many, as many of us as, as we've been navigating these, these waters, is that worse, we have challenging decisions to come, and I'd like to be able to model out and have more, a better grasp of exactly how the, the next year is going to work. And I think we have to continue to have these discussions as, as we move forward and be prepared to make some pretty challenging decisions. And I just want to thank, thank the administration and all of my colleagues for, for moving forward with, with a budget. That's my hope at least, and, but also to just remind everyone what we all know, which is that the work is not done. And my hope is that we will have a standing budget item discussion at all of our meetings coming up over the next couple of months because although we have a pretty strong outline of where we're heading, we're, we're going to have to be monitoring the situation very closely and have a very clear understanding over the coming months about how to move forward and what types of allocations we need to make, and what we can do with those federal funds, and how much exactly those federal funds are, and a myriad of other questions, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Hey, Madam Chair, and I'll be brief, and just wanted to acknowledge what has been said over and over again, that this has been, like Scott said, an unprecedented exercise and frustration because of circumstances that are beyond any of our control, and none of us could have predicted just a couple of months ago. To think we're, how the world has changed is pretty intimidating, I suppose, and, and puts things in perspective. But I will be voting no in regards to the budget this evening, but I do want to give credit where credit is due. I am very pleased with how very much has been done as it relates to our Chromebook distribution and standing up our virtual platform and, and communication with all of our stakeholders, not just our families, but persons to volunteer. So I know we could all spend a couple hours each discussing that subject, so don't need to, but I just, I do want to give credit where credit is due to the administration and to the team, and, and not just the Chromebook distribution and the virtual learning, but also the food distribution. It's really, it's really been something to see, and my hat's off, off to the superintendent, his, his team, and I say that with all the sincerity in the world. I, I will be voting no because I do, I, I am disappointed candidly that, and we've, we've discussed this, the budget is growing, it's still year-over-year increasing. That's not why I'm voting no, but I am concerned that we are not putting enough resources into the COVID contingency planning, and, and I am concerned, like we all are, about what, what may unfold in the next few months, but thank you, thanks for listening. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Please call the question on the budget as amended.
Do I need to read that again, or you all?
No.
Okay.
Very good.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Dr. Sapini?
No.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Page? Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes six-three.
And I will say, thank you all. I know this has been difficult. Making these choices was very difficult for all of us, but this is one of our major responsibilities as a school board, is to adopt a budget, so we've done it, and we may have to revisit it, as I said last time. All right, we have a lot left on the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, and also, Ms. Gibson would like to speak now, and then Ms. Page, but, but Ms. Gibson had put it in here that she would like to speak after the vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to speak actually regarding the agenda. I think it's important that we get on the, move our discussion up regarding graduation next steps as it is getting quite late. And I also ask, what are the items that we can move from this agenda, you know, from our agenda this evening, and push to perhaps an additional meeting or our next meeting as it is 10:38 in the evening? And I think transparency requires the light of day. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Cameras, what are the things that we really need to do tonight? I would assume the personnel actions, suspending the board policy. Do we need to do the one about budget transfers tonight, or can it wait till next time?
I think we need to do that tonight.
All right, so we need to do all of the board action items. How about the administrative business? That was... That's where we have the first read revisions to the policy. That'll take two minutes. Can we skip the updates for now? Okay, and I think I'm... Okay, let's, then let's go on to receive for action the recommendation to authorize the superintendent to make budget transfers to balance all accounts for fiscal year 20. Is there, are you making that presentation, Mr. Cameras? Are you explaining that?
I don't have a presentation. This is the normal request that is made every year at this time so that we can close out the budget year.
All right, and I see that I have a bunch of people who want to speak too. So Ms. Cosby, Ms. Page, Ms. Burke.
Actually, we can go ahead and take care of that business. I'll make a comment later.
All right, Ms. Page?
I wanted some clarity. I wanted to ask, asked it before the vote, but I lost my chat screen. But clarity, so when we are speaking of the COVID emergency contingency, that's the same thing as the stimulus funding. Am I correct? Or is it two, two different parts of money? Or just using the words interchangeably?
I, may I, Ms. Owen?
Yes.
I believe Mr. Young, when he was referencing that earlier, was speaking to the portion of the stimulus that we were recommending setting aside for unknown costs. You are correct, though, that all of the stimulus is for our response to COVID-19, and we have yet to make a final determination as to how we will use those funds. The draft I shared this evening was an iteration on the previous one, and it did indicate about 1.2 million of the total stimulus to hold back as an emergency fund, and I think that is what Mr. Warren was referencing.
Okay.
I don't want to put words in his mouth, though.
I'm clear, I'm clear now.
Okay, Ms. Burke?
Yes, ma'am chair, I just wanted to make sure with the updates that we do include graduation, 6.8, because a lot of our parents are asking, and we did promise in the last meeting that we would...
Oh, I see, sorry.
Yeah, we did state in the last meeting that we would address that before this month was over. So I asked that we do keep, as Ms. Kenya, as Ms. Gibson stated as well, keep graduation on the agenda.
6.09.
6.08, isn't it?
Well, the one I printed out today is on 6.09.
Whatever, whatever point it is, would you please include graduation? Thank you.
All right, so and Ms. Lilly or Mr. Hughes, do we need to do the first read for 6.04 tonight?
I would defer to the administration. I believe that that was time-sensitive. Michelle may be able to...
Or Mr. Hughes?
Okay, yes, there is.
Okay, do we need to do that tonight, Mr. Hughes?
No, we need to do board action for 5.03.
Okay, we don't, the time-sensitive is not 8.2 point, yeah, okay. All right, so let's go on now to to, the superintendent, every year, needs the authority to make budget transfers to balance all accounts for fiscal year 20. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Page has moved, and Ms. Door has seconded that we continue what is our regular and appropriate practice that to close out the fiscal year, the superintendent, if he's got a pot of money here, he can switch it over to there to get the money spent. Okay, let us have a vote, or first, does anybody need to comment? Discuss? No, all right, let's, let's move on with that vote.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Mrs. Gibson?
Steen.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes eight with one abstention.
All right, now we will move to receive for action a request to suspend board policy 8-2.4, and Mr. Hughes has that.
Good evening, Madam Chair Owen, Madam Vice Chair Burke, School Board members and Superintendent Cameras. The administration brings forth a request to suspend part of the school board policy 8-2.4 titled "Student attendance and absences truancy." I draw your attention to the section of the policy regarding the maximum number of allowable absences in a school a year and the applicable waiver policy. Specifically, we request to suspend the following part of the policy. Students shall not be absent from school or excused or unexcused absences excluding suspensions for 18 or more school days per year or 18 class periods of a course, nine days for a one semester course. Any student who exceeds this total will not be eligible to receive course credit and/or will be subject to retention in accordance with school board policy 5-4.2 titled "Promotion and Retention of Pupils." Our request to suspend this part of the board policy for the 1920 school year in no way suggests a reduced value this administration places on student attendance. Rather, given COVID-19, we recognize that there are likely multiple challenges with administering the waiver process associated with the consequence of chronic absenteeism. First, we know that documentation at this time is challenging, both for families getting it, for example, documentation that would show an extreme medical issue, and for them to submit it to us for consideration, given that we are not accepting paper documents at this time. Second, some of the factors that might be considered in granting a waiver, such as improved attendance in the final months of schools, are just not possible for students to demonstrate at this time. Finally, our focus has been on ensuring that students, including those who had issues with absenteeism in the past, are enrolling RPS at home in edgenuity. In fact, to date, 75% of RPS students have self-enrolled in at least one RPS at-home edgenuity module, and the enrollment increases every single day. This is the type of evidence that demonstrates that our students are committed to their academic progress, and we would not want to have asked them to invest their time in edgenuity and then withhold credit anyway, given, given attendance issues in the past. Ultimately, given these unprecedented times, and given we know many of our students and families are facing extreme stressors, we want to extend empathy and support. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? That was Ms. Burke.
Second.
And that was Ms. Door. And Ms. Wilson, I have sent it to you, the exact language. But let's go ahead. Is there any discussion about this policy suspension waiver? I don't see any, all right, let's call the question.
Ms. Owen, did you send it in the chat or in the email?
Email.
And this is the language you want for the motion?
Yes. I can read it if you, if you need me to.
I found it, I'm just bringing it over. So you want to approve a request to suspend board policy 8-2.4, student attendance and attendance slash truancy regarding the maximum number of allowable, allowable absences in a school year and the applicable waiver policy specifically request to suspend the following section of the policy. Students shall not be absent from school for excused or unexcused absences excluding suspensions for 18 or more school days per year or 18 class periods of a course, nine days per one, for one semester. Any student who exceeds this total will not be eligible to receive course credit and/or will be subject to retention in accordance with school board policy 4.2, promotion and retention of pupils.
Okay, so is there any discussion? All right, let's have the vote.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, moving on to the... Okay, moving on to the personnel actions. These were not posted to board docs, but they were sent to us by, uh, Gmail today from Ms. Wilson.
Uh, sent to you all on Friday because I couldn't get them to save to post to board docs.
Right, so Ms. Wilson has sent those to us. I hope everybody has taken the time to go through them. It's a lot of changes, particularly, uh, with, I will make a note, a lot of teachers who are leaving. Do I hear a motion to approve the personnel actions?
So move.
Is there a second? That was Ms. Burke. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Page? Okay, is there discussion? We can't really discuss this, can we? No, so there's no discussion. So we'll call the question.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Abstain.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Cosby?
Abstain.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes five, two with two extensions.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we are now finished with board action items, so we will go to 6.09 to receive the COVID-19 update on graduation. Is that Mr. Camaras or Mr. Hughes?
I'll give a very brief overview and then, uh, Mr. Hughes can answer any follow-up questions. Um, I do want to thank, uh, Harry and, uh, the work he's done with the high school principals and other folks to put together a very, uh, exciting and, and comprehensive approach to our graduation ceremonies. As you may recall, in our last discussion about this, we talked about two options, a virtual or an in-person option, and we asked for feedback. And, um, well, we've decided, why not do both? So that's what we're going to do. We're going to have a virtual option, uh, not option, we'll have a virtual, uh, graduation for all of our high school classes, high school seniors, and an in-person option. The virtual, in essence, is a video which will have all of your normal speeches in it, along with a slideshow where you'll hear each student's name called, pictures, uh, things of that nature. Um, it will be a keepsake that the kids will have, uh, for the rest of their lives and we'll post them all on our websites as well. And, uh, we're really excited about that, uh, to make that available to our students. But we are also going to have the in-person opportunities for our seniors to walk across the proverbial stage. Uh, they will do so either on their football fields or, uh, in a gym, uh, depending upon the school, based upon the unique facilities of each school. Uh, we will have, uh, families come with, uh, three, uh, the student can bring three guests. Uh, they'll be in their cap and gown. They'll be there, we'll call their name, we'll take the pictures, uh, they can move their tassel. Um, and so all of the key parts of the in-person graduation, they'll be able to do. We'll have to use some of the protocols we used in terms of timeframes that we used for the Chromebook distribution, so certain letters, uh, at certain times, uh, of the morning and other letters at other times. Uh, that's just the reality of where we are, but that's very similar to uh, what Louisa County did, which is a, a good template, uh, that we are using as a foundation. Um, all of this will happen, the in-person and the virtual, the week of June 22nd to June 26th. So all of our high schools will have both their virtual videos go live and their in-person ceremonies. We're just finalizing the times, uh, for, uh, each of those, uh, graduations. Harry can provide any additional detail or questions that folks have, but let me just say we're really, really thrilled, uh, to be able to do this for our kids. I've received a number of emails from our seniors, um, giving feedback, uh, and, um, advocating for themselves, and we're, we're thrilled to be able to provide this experience for them.
All right. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just like, would like to thank the superintendent and the administration. As we discussed that in an earlier meeting, um, so many of our students and parents, what, who doesn't look forward to a high school graduation? That's a stepping stone to adulthood. So I thank you so very much, number one, for planning a virtual and an opportunity to be face-to-face, because those are pictures you keep forever. Whether you're going on to higher education, whether you're going to the work, world of work, um, finishing high school is so important for our students and our family members, and I'm excited to be a part of that however I can be from afar. But thank you also, which was really a concern of mine, and that was the opportunity to have this in June and not August. So, um, I, I've been hearing from so many parents, so many students, so many teachers, all types of ideas and suggestions, so, um, I think our administration has hit it right on the head and our students do deserve that. I mean, 12, 13 years of school. And I'm glad that we're doing the virtual, but also each school having a virtual, not everyone collective. And, um, also the opportunity to be face-to-face. So thank you so very much for that. I'm pleased and I think that I, our constituency as well. Congratulations to our students. Thank you.
I do not see any other questions or comments. I'll just say, let's go, team. And is there anything that anybody would like to, um, bring up at this time? Or can I adjourn this meeting?
Uh, comment.
Okay, Cosby?
Or a request. Um, so we have talked a lot about additional information that we like to receive. One, dealing with, uh, the curriculum. And I believe my colleague, Mr. Barlow, even throughout the suggestion, if we have an additional meeting before December, oh, not December. Lord, I can't even get it straight.
Before December, yes.
June 1st, um, uh, so that we can, hopefully the administration could address some of our questions, one. And then second, we have asked repeat- repeatedly about some scenario planning. And to get more information, and I've heard this from, you know, a lot of teachers, you know, just being in limbo, just to, to, even if we have just some initial discussions about it, what do we think the upcoming school year would look like and some of the, the plans? So if we can get something definitive on the calendar to have those discussions and to address some of the questions about the, uh, curriculum proposals, that would be great.
Well, I'm gonna just say that I, that Dr. Epp and her team have planned virtual meetings to answer questions about the curricula over the next two weeks, 10 days, Dr. Epp? And she is sending that information to each of us. And I think rather than having us sit around in, in this and talk about it, that if we choose to go to some of those and participate in the discussion with the administrative team who have all this information and the teachers and the principals and the families, it seems to me that that would be a really robust way to discuss and get your questions answered. So I will talk more about this with the administrative team. I welcome you to email me or call me about this. But, um, they're doing so many meetings already in the next 10 days to two weeks. With anybody who wants to join those meetings, I would have, I would really be reluctant to say, "Oh, but we want you to just come and meet with us this one time." So I'll converse with them, I'll converse with Mr. Camaras, and I will welcome your calls or emails to me to give me a bigger picture of why you think we need to have that just as part of us. If it's just questions about the curricula, seems to me that we don't actually have to meet and ask them questions again. But, and it's 10:58, it's 11 o'clock. I'm gonna say if there's nobody else.
Well, I'm sorry, but what about, I, I talked about the scenario planning too. I mean, okay, let me just, let me just tell you my concern. This is my concern. We have asked for information repeatedly. And so we need to get something on the calendar so that we can get that information. It is critical. Uh, we do, uh, people are asking all the time, so what is it gonna look like? We do know that we have our neighboring school divisions that have already just started to make these plans, so, and have articulated them. So if we can get that type of information sooner rather than later, that will be good.
Mr. Camaras?
And I don't, and I don't want to be in a situation where it's like, we asked for it and we never did get it and we keep kicking the can down the road, and thus, that is a source of frustration.
Mr. Camaras?
Glad to talk through various options at our next school board meeting, absolutely.
Okay, Ms. Cosby?
All right, as long as it's something that's gonna be on the calendar.
Okay. We will meet for agenda planning and I believe that we will make sure it's on the agenda for June the 1st. Okay? All right. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, I hereby adjourn this meeting.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Night.